And you want my friend Dave to log in also?
Sure.
We are on air. It is almost... So you started to say something about...
Okay.
Yeah, she was doing good right up to that last line and then I was kinda like... Thank you for sharing. The last line's on the other side. Yes, that last line, yes.
Is that the same one we got?
Can I say it's true vote?
It is.
It's the same thing we had.
That makes sense and if not then...
Well, I just never know. I haven't been able to measure it against people who've worked with a lot of electors, not me.
I'm gonna go with he is also feeling bad. He just messed up.
Did you see my note I wrote you back about the single payer?
Did you see a note I wrote back to you?
No, I didn't see any. We're gonna email it right now.
Can you maybe note which building Chris Lyons is in at the county?
He's in...
Know what?
Executive office.
Executive office.
Just science.
We have a mental... And you have a mental to figure out how we do the free tickets. He's trying to get yours to know that he's a semi-veteran. I'll let you guys look at it.
And if I can't figure it out?
What time do we start? 5:30 or 5:15?
5:15, so.
So we are good to go?
We are good to go. So a call to order the study session and welcome Mitch and Jason to get us caught up on Sunday Parkway's process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of council. Jason Wax, Community Programs Coordinator, is joining me, Mitch Neiman, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, we're gonna talk to you, we'll have a discussion about the 2018 Sundays Parkway's event, proposed event. And then perhaps towards the end of our discussion, we allotted about, I think, 45 minutes to an hour for this discussion. We can talk about the 2017 event, if you have any questions. So we can stay on track with 2018 and then if there's any questions you have about 2017, we can go into that. So as a precursor to this conversation, Jason prepped a memo for you, which I sent out on Friday. You also have it by your side to talk a little bit about, really, the concept of what an Open Streets program is, what other cities are doing them, what some objectives are, goals, that sort of thing, processes involved, and just other discussion topics around how you would plan an event like this in the city of Milwaukee with everything from designing the route to, again, having a particular goal or mindset involved with going into it and, of course, the budget and really the expected audience or participation. So with that, we'll start off with, really, and I'll turn it over to Jason also, where we can start off with really just talking about, maybe, we put up a table together to talk about some objectives and discussions. So if, as we get your feedback, because we're not asking for any action this evening or direction, we're more about just getting some feedback from you so we can come to you in a more formal session with a proposal with how the 2018 event will play out. But this is the first time the council collectively has had an opportunity to talk about the event outside of, with Portland and participating on your own. So we'd like to document some of your comments and just take them back and see how we can make every... Make the program as cohesive as possible. So given that, I guess we can start by asking you all if you had an opportunity to review the Open Streets website link that Jason included in his memo and if there was anything that stood out among those programs, different ideas, different concepts, that sort of thing. Any particular feedback around that construct?
Well, the construct, I mean, their website notwithstanding, I think the concept of it is good for many of the reasons you list there. And for what we experienced at the last Sunday Parkway's, I think a lot of Portland was kinda surprised. I mean, a lot of Portland still has this idea of what Milwaukee is and what it looks like based on what they heard growing up or, you know, whatever. And a lot of the comments we heard during the ride and afterwards were, they were, they're like, wow, Milwaukee's cool. And I think, to whatever degree we wanna promote that fact, I think this is an outstanding opportunity to do it. And if we are doing our own, it allows us to choose the route to highlight different neighborhoods, to highlight different business areas. I get that it's a huge lift for our city to do by ourselves and it's gonna take careful consideration, the pros and cons, is it worth what it's gonna take? Right? Does this benefit? And do we wanna wait until maybe we have more of our safe projects done so we can be highlighting those projects in the route, stuff like that? I don't know. But I think by and large, it's a good thing. It's beneficial both to the residents, the businesses, and the people outside of the area.
Yeah, and if I may add, I think the, some of the coaching advice we received from the city of Portland is that these events, they're not necessarily a one-size-fits-all type of an event. Like, they are custom tailored based on communities' goals and priorities and sizes. And in fact, one of the members of the P-Bot, the Portland team, had said to us when we were... We've been shadowing them for the past couple of months to kinda take a look at some of the ins and outs of their mechanics of the event. So when we do go on our own, they... Piece of advice they gave is they said, Mitch and Jason, your event doesn't necessarily have to emulate, you know, be exactly like what our event is. We're a big city and we cater to a large group of active, engaged cyclists and other actively transported, you know, transportation-focused individuals and residents. Our goals are to really connect community. That's one of our goals, and to show off our parks. You look at cities, larger cities than us like Los Angeles, their goal is strictly critical mass. They don't connect communities, they don't look at parks, they go on the freeways and on the busy streets to give motor, automobile drivers an idea that bicyclists exist on these roads and you need to watch out. And so it's a different mindset. And you go to a smaller town and it's about connecting their downtown district or their, you know, neighborhood. So it's, what they basically said was, our program is prescribed for us and you've been riding along with our program, but that doesn't necessarily have to be what your program looks like. And so that's just part of Jason's memo.
Yeah, and our route doesn't have to be as big as their route. You know, we can start smaller, for sure.
And that even goes to things like activity areas. I mean, there's a lot of, some of these, like, for example, in Los Angeles, they don't do a lot of activity areas. They send, they do the critical mass pieces. And they get hundreds of thousands of bicyclists out on the road, obviously, because they have a large population.
Well, because they close a main road, and that's what they do in New York City. They do like Park Avenue and everybody's like, who can ride your bike?
Yeah, yeah, and so, great point. And so when we, when we look at, you know, this map in front of you has four key activity areas, maybe the event for Milwaukee doesn't have activity areas, or maybe it does have more.
Maybe it has more.
Yeah, so these are just options to just let you know that you don't... You've been, we've had the fortune of, or we've been fortunate enough to work with pretty much the industry, one of the industry leaders in this Open Streets concept and these events and that we don't necessarily have to replicate exactly their model. And that we can, we, in fact, it's encouraged that we be a little different in case we wanted to pull some of that arctic audience, so just food for thought.
Well, I think the difference we have too, the potential difference if we wanted to use our parks as activity areas is, you know, it doesn't all have to fall in the city. It could be the neighborhood, like Ardell Park, you do what you want in Balfour Park. Ardell Village, you do what you want in Balfour Park. And, you know, same thing with Linwood and Wishaw Park or whatever. So it doesn't have to be that the city organizes all the activity areas in the same way that, you know...
So I think what you're saying in that too is that if we look at a configuration that takes people past or through as many local parks and other kinds of things like that as possible, then it, you know, it can add to the event itself overall.
And we might have to do some, you know, some recruiting of things like food vendors and stuff that the neighborhoods may not be quite up to doing, but, you know, it could be some kind of hybrid.
In thinking along that line too, I wonder what the opportunities for Milwaukee might be that... I mean, obviously, we'd have to get it planned way in advance, but it's a Sunday, you know, but, so there's hardly anybody going through international way, you know, the industrial area. But what if Bob's Red Mill said, yeah, we'll stay open on that Sunday. We don't usually do Sundays, but we'll stay open from X to X. And, you know, people, I mean, think what a plus that might be for an event like this.
And we, and to add to that, when we were talking with the Portland crew about this, as they also mentioned, it may not necessarily have to be a Sunday. It could be a Saturday. So they do it on Sundays because they, based on their traffic counts, they find fewer people are just inherently on the road. There are fewer people on the road.
That would be the case with Milwaukee.
But is that the case for Milwaukee? Is maybe Milwaukee's actually busier with all of our churches on Sunday than we are? I mean, because the places of faith are, they can be an issue, is an obstacle. Not necessarily, I mean, they'll come out, but sometimes they'll be, there's always the folks, we hear from P-Bot all the time, the places of congregation that forget that the event's happening and the next thing you know, you've got the lions seen in the parking lot, we're going by there and we're closing down. Just little small details like that. So maybe Milwaukee per square mile has more of those places in a specific route than Portland would. So maybe a Saturday would be a better option. We don't know. So something for the council, again, this is your event. I mean, you can really decide what makes sense for your city, so.
So by next year, will, is there an expectation the farmer's market will be relocated?
So the concern that I have with next year, downtown in general, is that you have major construction.
Right.
And even if you're able at least to possibly fore... So the concern that I have is actually not just the width of the streets and people having fencing out into the roads. It's actually, it's really not fun being on a bike, going through a construction zone and eating a meal.
Oh, no, I can imagine, yeah.
And no matter how cleaned up they get, there are without a doubt always problems with trying to deal with that kind of fallout from the site. So one of the things that Jason and Mitch talked to me about is trying to keep it on the other side of 224 next year. And I think that, I've also heard from all of you, the NDAs and finding a way to sort of highlight the neighborhood piece might be one of those values that you guys really wanna hone in on, especially when you camped it down here.
Right.
So if that's one of the values, it could be we wanna focus on the east side of 224 for this year and we're going to try and focus on a smaller route that hits every NDA that's on that side of the road and whatever that looks like.
Yeah, and we, I think we've had some one-off conversations with some members of council about just the benefit, the value of being out of O-dots right away. I mean, there's some, there's some serious value in that. And then, you know, really spreading the love to our neighborhoods of the east. I mean, if you think about our major events, whether there's Solstice, Umbrella Parade, we did the Light Rail Grand Opening and also this event. We don't do a whole lot of major events and where the majority of our population is. So that's an opportunity, I think, to engage.
Yeah, it is an opportunity. I think it's important. And I like the idea of highlighting the east side of the east neighborhoods. But I also, I also sort of have a little less... Part of the problem with those neighborhoods is that 224 and 99 are such obstacles. And so in my opinion, you know, when we cross those streets, we're highlighting that problem because the solution to the problem shouldn't be, okay, well, we'll avoid it. The solution is, we need a solution.
Very good point. Very good point.
Right. I totally hear you. I will also say that all of these decisions, all these goals that you set up here will bring back a price tag. So if we decide that we wanna stay in a smaller footprint, we don't have to shut down roads, we don't have to pay overtime for officers, we don't have to do those pieces, so that's one piece. However, we also can choose to prioritize that this is something that's really important to us for that year. When Mitch and I were talking price, we were talking about upwards of $100,000 to $150,000 depending on what we were gonna try and achieve and what we're shutting down. We don't have to do that, but I'm just letting you know that the range is, the staff we have today maybe with $25,000, which we already put towards Portland once, up to that amount. And so it's just also heads up that when we go too far into making this too exciting, it'll cost us.
It might be interesting to do the first year, you know, we've got greenways that are on our books, right? That we all hope to build.
In our reality.
If we did the route, kinda like a old bike Milwaukee route, where we're doing all the greenways that we have proposed so you can see, you have a picture in your mind, what it'd be like to build, ride your bike, or let your kid ride your bike, their bike, on these routes and they'll be safe. That would make a pretty nice loop, you know, Monroe, Stanley, down to Spring Water and then up 32nd, 29th.
It's 29th.
That thing back to Monroe.
Yeah.
That route, right? If we created that route, it would be a nice sort of a... It might get people more excited about, yeah, let's get these things built. That would be maybe a good first-year one because it wouldn't be crazy expensive and then...
Yeah, the Spring Water is, you know, is easy. You don't need so many volunteers. You know, you need somebody getting you on and getting you off, but, and maybe the one place where there's the crossing, but, yeah, you don't need a ton of volunteers to do the Spring Water. So that reduces your volunteer demand on your route. It's also in Portland, but that's okay.
I mean, it's Portland Park, but... The other thing, I mean, the Spring Water, obviously, it's very comfortable to ride. I do it a lot, but it doesn't really hit the other elements, right? I mean, yes, public health and I guess environment if you're going somewhere where that's part of your route, but in terms of community and social engagement, you know, getting people in.
No, it would be the other three, Stanley and Monroe and 29th.
Well, these are just, these are samples. So you guys can change any of those if they don't hit the criteria you want. Or if you love them all, keep them.
I think that those are important.
You could add two of them also, right?
You can, but every time we add another thing, you're probably adding lane miles.
Okay, gotcha.
Right? So trying to get to a business district, if you're also trying to do the NDAs, you just start adding...
Yeah, I wouldn't be inclined to do business districts myself.
To do what, Lisa?
I wouldn't be inclined to do business districts. I mean, that's 32nd, that's King, that's major roads. I think keeping it on secondary roads...
Would that include downtown? Would that include downtown?
I like the idea of the parks and maybe like the international, international way in the parks.
The reason why I like the idea of business districts is because if we're... Connecting people to their neighborhoods, including their hubs, because that was one thing that came out of visioning, is that people want, you know, neighborhood hubs. They want those services. Well, currently, it's the only way, you know, if you, if the only comfortable way for you to get there is by car, you know, this is a way to highlight, you know, there are other ways to get there, there are other ways to get to, you know, the amenities in your neighborhood or close by.
But also, there aren't really, I mean, I'm just thinking in my head, it's, same time I'm speaking, there aren't really a lot of neighborhood business hubs. I mean, in my neighborhood, you have to go up to Linwood and King and that's arterial. That's not...
And King Road, Safeway, Safeway.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah, you know, so...
But that's the point of closing the street down. Is that it actually gives a comfortable way for people to highlight, like, look at how great it would be to get to your neighborhood hub if you had a safer way to get there.
Yeah, well, and to council member Faulkner's point, one of the, when we were going through scenario routes with the city of Portland, we asked them, as us being, you know, the city being somewhat newbies in this, and if we were, if you were to design a route, I mean, do you think how conservative we should go in terms of safety and that sort of thing, you know, using some of our, you know, like the Spring Water corridor, that sort of stuff? And they said, well, you wanna make sure that your route's exciting also. And to a lot of people, like, and they used the, they gave the example of, when I first moved here, I did the bridge pedal the first year. And I did that, not so much because I was that enamored by the route, but I knew I could ride on the 405 freeway without, like, on a bike legally. And so it was really a rush, and it really was, and there were a couple places you could ride. And so you think about that, like, that's kind of the people who would...
So if you could close down King Road, people would probably really have fun with that.
Right, that's my point. I mean, we're not actually...
I mean, it's not, when I think of it as a neighborhood...
The very thing that we're saying makes it not a good route. We're taking that element off the table.
And that goes back, and that goes back, exactly, and that goes back to that critical mass. That would be the, like, going back to the Los Angeles example of critical mass, kind of showing that demonstration of bicyclists are here to stay as well with the car. How can they exist, coexist, bicycles and automobiles? But again, that's, those are lifts, resource lifts, that involve a lot of traffic control, a lot of barricading, a lot of police involvement, safety.
You will force people onto Monroe, which seems like the opposite of what we want to be doing.
That's true.
Right, so, yeah, as you can see, the goals are very interesting.
If we're gonna focus on greenways, then it's exactly what we need to do, is have folks ride Monroe.
No, that's what I mean.
And every year, we can do different routes and feature different, sort of different concepts. Are we hoping to draw a lot from the outer, outside of Milwaukee, I guess?
That's a good question. I think depending on how unique the event is, I would think so. And I think there'd be some permeation from our neighbors, both ways.
There were a lot of people from Oak Grove who rode it for Trolley Trail Road last year and I would think that would be the truth.
Yeah, and I can't imagine...
People from Portland?
Maybe, I can't imagine...
Because they're not doing...
They're not doing a Selwood route this year.
They're not doing Selwood. Once they leave after this year, they're not doing Selwood.
They're not doing it again?
They're not doing it in 2018. Yeah, and so that's a good point. And I think with our critical linkages now, we have the 17th Avenue, plus we have Spring Water. I don't see why folks in Selwood wouldn't be coming down. We will still aggressively market this as a city event, but obviously open to all. I would think that those folks would be very inclined to join. So especially if we have activity areas like we have the reputation of having, which pull folks for a specific reason, so.
How many parkways does Portland do?
Five.
And they're gonna continue doing this, they're just not doing Selwood?
That's right. They, yeah, they only have a couple that they actually make as permanent and then they try to move around the city.
They do, yeah, two or three years here and then move.
One of their big goals is to showcase good bike routes.
Yeah, it was last year.
They can basically show people, hey, on everyday basis, you could be using these routes, okay?
Yeah, their overarching goal is community connectivity, so as he mentioned, that's connectivity. So again, in this conversation, it's, you know, what is our goal and what are goals type of thing, so for these events.
And once we talk about all of these things, what we're gonna end up doing and targeting in Portland, one of the big things that we're gonna have to deal with on the east side is hills. You know, we're gonna look at these goals and try to hit what you guys wanna do as much as possible, but that is really gonna be a big one. Because you obviously don't wanna make it too difficult, the route too difficult by the road because, you know, this isn't for just bicyclists, so, you know, rapid bicycling. So the east side's a little bit more difficult, I think, than our current route. Well, except we did the two worst hills last year.
That's true. I remember all those people coming up that hill.
How much worse can it get? Monroe and...
It's very conveniently located at a place where...
The relative...
29th, is it really?
Getting up to 229 is steep and it's completely flat, all rutted out.
And then going down, man, those little kids sure liked it going down.
So do any of the core objectives stand out to any members of council in terms of, if you were to weight them from one to four, as being most important?
I would just say economic is probably the last.
Yeah, I think so too. I think the community maybe first, environmental, then public health, then economic.
I mean, if I were personally ranking them, I think I would rank them the same way.
Do you guys maybe wanna, because a lot, I'm asking this because, so based on these objectives with consensus of the council, is how we can actually design the route and design some of the programming features, so.
We pretty much all commented on the connectivity and how important that is in community and, you know, so on. So again, to me, that seems like the first, most important thing.
I guess I think about the economic and community and that connectivity sort of hand in hand. So I'm sort of not seeing why we're separating them so much because...
So you mean adding like economic benefit to community and social?
I mean, because our, you know, our local businesses are part of those communities and connecting people to those local businesses in their, you know, in their communities. I guess I'm just sort of still thinking about this neighborhood hub idea that came out so strong.
And I would, I disagree with that, but I would also say that, consider also the fact that this is on a Sunday when not a lot of local businesses are open, except like the ones in those very localized hubs, like the Milwaukee Cafe, for instance.
And they were, and obviously, you know, they're right on this route and they were pleased to be on the route because they were able to, they had sort of a capture audience.
But not every neighborhood is gonna have something that's...
But it also makes it a little bit easier to have interesting places for people on the route to, you know, it's sort of like a built-in destination, if you will. You know, if we don't go to those places, then people are having to actually bring those things to the parks or whatever it is, to the activity areas.
And as far as like coming downtown, it's a Sunday, so there'd be Sunday Farmer's Market, you know, book sales, stuff like that, but...
Are we thinking about for next year's route not doing downtown? Are we thinking about for next year's route not doing downtown?
Yeah.
Because of construction.
Yeah, because of construction.
Exactly, but that's what I mean, businesses wouldn't be open anyhow.
Well, the, if you look at the Selwood, for the Selwood route, if you notice, the, they, actually, they take the, they avoid the business districts because, and not so much that they don't want to be on the busy Tacoma, Seventeenth, Milwaukee streets or what have you, or Bybee, they got feedback from the businesses that over, you know, that necessarily it might impact their business, like, in a negative manner.
Oh, yeah.
So, based on their, because they heavily engage with the Westmoreland Business League and Selwood-Morland Business League, and so...
Well, I think that's...
Their feedback was if, it could potentially deter customers from, you know, their regular customers who come by way of car or something, it's like if they were not able to get to them. But that's just one scenario. They, on the path, on the Laurelhurst one, that is their stable northeast neighborhood, it goes through, they don't do a beer garden because they go right by Culmination Brewing. And that acts as, so to your point, that acts as their beer gardens, a big relief, because the P-Bot doesn't have to manage any logistics of that, the route goes right by it.
They don't do a beer garden anywhere. They don't do beer gardens.
True, but that's a way of getting around, you know, you're right, they don't do a beer garden, but that's a, it's a sneaky way of them having that value add on the route with it just inherently being there, so...
I think that, I'm sure, I mean, I've heard from Linda, too, that it's true that a lot of times business is grouse if you take their access. But it's also their model is to use the greenways, not to use the arterial, but to use the greenway.
That's right, that's a good point.
They want to illustrate to people that you can get to this business district without using a major road.
Right, right.
Right, and that's safer. We have decided... I think a lot of people don't know the greenways exist, because it's not like they're really obvious. Unless you're on a bike and you're looking for them, and sometimes even then, it's not so obvious.
Yeah.
So I think that's a lot of what this has always been around for Portland. It's different for other cities, right? But I think, given the plans that we have, it makes sense, at least for us, for the first year, to do the same thing, to sort of highlight. Now, the concern just came up for me when we were talking about construction. Is it possible that either Murphy or McFarlane could be under construction next summer?
I doubt it. And I say that only because I know, um, these projects, how long it's taking for ramp-up time, and since they're not even close to where these other ones are, I think you're probably safe. Anything can change, miracles can happen, but I wouldn't expect that one nearly as The other piece that Jason and Mitch were great to let me know is just, this is going to be the first year that we're doing this. We can change it. This is, what is this attempt, and let's learn from it, and let's figure out. So if we, after we go through that experience, go, oh, we really should have tied more to the business district, or we really should have tried to do X, Y, and Z, I think that some of that's going to be lessons learned, because different communities are very different. In Salt Lake, we used to shut down the roads for the Tour de Utah, so the big bike race that would go through the whole state. And without fail, the businesses would come unglued, but the number of people standing on the street corner, like, they're shopping, like, they're store, didn't matter. So it's this weird dichotomy, and each business community is a little bit different.
Well, we got a little of that last year from some of our downtown businesses. I mean, we haven't, unless Jason's had a big response this week from the letter he sent out to businesses last week, you know, we haven't had our businesses wanting to participate in it.
Heard from Pendleton, Pendleton Boulevard wants to, like, do something.
Oh, do they?
Run the Spring Water Trail.
Oh, nice! Oh, that's cool.
That's huge.
Am I remembering correctly that there didn't seem to be a lot of folks stopping at the Farmer's Market for things left?
No, people did.
Did they? Yeah, I was trying to remember, it seems like I'd heard some feedback on that.
I mean, I felt like it was kind of a crunch, like, people were stopping more for the music, the beer garden.
Yeah, okay.
And so some people were leaving their bike and walking into the market or whatever. I think there was a premium on bike parking there, because you had both of those things happening right there.
Yeah, I'm hoping that there's a whole lot more bike parking this year.
Noted.
Because it's so, it's such a great spot, right? I mean, compared to virtually any other spot on any of their other parkways, this was like, really rich with interesting things to do.
Right. I think with the Farmer's Market, can imagine, like, I know when I go to the Farmer's Market, it's like, it's hard on a bike, unless you have places to put stuff, you know, have it carried around, do it around, so...
Oh, but some people, yeah, some people have the bags, you know, piers, and, yeah, or they take their kid in there for, you know, a popsicle or whatever.
We're going to grab lunch, sure.
Well, you only care about the balloon.
The balloon animals, yes.
Oh, yeah. Just feeding in the honey stare. Oh, that's true, that's true. Sorry, forgot.
What about the peanuts?
So...
She does love the, oh, wow, she just likes to make food, yeah.
So we're definitely, I'm just trying to keep us moving along, we're definitely solid on community and social would probably be the number one priority of the council for some of these core objectives.
Yes, they would be community, social, then environment, public health, economic in that order.
Uh, community, social, I'm hearing number two would be environmental, and three would be public health, and four would be economic? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I said about...
Yeah, that was my thinking, and it sounds like that's Mark's also.
I'm okay with that.
And it was Shane's, too.
Good, great. That's really helpful, because I think, I do truly believe they all integrate, but it's just whether you beef up one more than the other and how that trickles down, yeah.
And so the question in my mind is, do we do the connecting the parks, which is easy enough on the route you, on the route you described, on the, using the greenways, although, like Wichita Park is a little past Stanley, so we'd have to stub people out to Wichita and bring them back to go up Stanley. Same thing with Homewood, it's a little bit off of Monroe, but, I mean, I think those things are doable. Or do we do schools? That's a complete different model than Portland. Do we have the schools be our activity areas, and do we try to connect them?
Have we ever had that conversation with NC, with North Clark?
Haven't, no.
And next year, at this time, or, you know, around this time, whenever we do this, it could be that Wichita is under heavy construction.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They're rebuilding Wichita?
Well, no, Wichita Park, that's a good point.
Oh, Wichita Park.
Councilmember Parks.
I thought you meant that.
That's a great, that's a good point.
Yeah.
October 28th is completion, and they'll probably be doing some major punch list items over there.
Now, all of that development at the park will occur next year.
Or we could do a ribbon cutting, who knows?
Yeah, actually, not a bad idea, depending on how schedules work, but it's true. There's a point where you show off these assets as well.
We get everything.
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a thing called substantial completion, let's face it. We did a grand opening on Riverfront Park when it was substantially complete. It wasn't formally, the notice of completion wasn't adopted by council until November that year. We did it in May. So that is something that's completely normal.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and good point to think about. And then also, as a side note, since we've developed a kind of a really nice working relationship with the P-Bot crew, a couple of their, Rich, Rich on P-Bot, he offered to do it, like, a route analysis for us, just sort of like as like a helping hand type of thing, so we're going to definitely take him. When we get, when we put all this back together, there's the feedback, we're certainly going to take him up on that, because the things like the elevation gains and tricky intersections, I mean, that's all stuff these guys have been working through at a little, even a higher level than us, so they can provide some really nice technical insight.
Should we also keep in mind, is there any, I'm not sure how to say it, I know that last year, and I'm not sure if there was discussion, they should have gone, but the museum was very interested in having that be along a route or where people could, you know, at least stop there easily or something. So, I mean, that's the one thing we have that's kind of...
Well, this year, the museum is going to go to the cemetery and do something with the cemetery.
The Pioneer Cemetery, over here off Seventeenth?
Uh-huh. Yeah, they're going to do something at the cemetery. They're starting to collaborate on some stuff.
Okay.
They're definitely talking about doing that.
Yeah, I just didn't want them to be, once again, left out of...
So the greenway, as it's currently designed, goes up Washington, right? It doesn't go up Monroe in that part.
That's correct.
It's supposed to go across the, the McFarlane site, and then go up Washington, which actually puts you right there at the...
And it makes for a more gradual hill, right?
Right, which is why...
So that's why it goes that way.
That's why it was proposed in that place.
That's true.
So that's an interesting idea, and that would be just, that would make the museum very happy, yeah, Washington.
Yeah, I'm sure it would, yeah.
The question is getting across.
Well, you'd just have to go to the corner and turn right. I don't think, I don't think you're going to have that paved in time.
So another element that I think would be great to get some feedback on is something we really have 100% in control of is our schedule and time and date and day. Working with Portland, we've kind of been held hostage somewhat to their time and the event season. It's typically been later in the fall. This is an opportunity for this council to set that day and time. I mean, obviously, the time, we know what those, what that looks like, but the day or the month, we know that some of our nicest weather is in July and August, and we know last year our event was on October 2nd, and it rained, and it was cold. And this year, it's September 24th, we're a little nervous that it could potentially rain again. So this is an opportunity for the council to, if you think an August date makes more sense, or a July date, or a June date, that's something that, obviously, we'd want to, we'd want to coordinate it outside of another regional event, so if we knew Portland was doing one of theirs on a particular weekend, or Sunday in July, we wouldn't do it on the same day.
I think September's going to actually work out great. I think September's a good month for it. And yes, it could rain, but it's rarely raining.
Sunday when it's Portland, right?
Even the last year, it actually quit raining by the time the event really began, but we were intimidated and stayed in.
Well, some general, you know, maybe some general guidance of maybe, would that be, maybe it could be the more earlier part of September, something like, I mean, we did Light Rail Grand Opening on...
Labor Day, second weekend in September.
We did Light Rail Grand Opening on September 12th, and it was hot, it was 98 degrees.
It was very hot. That's why I also think, yeah, I mean, Portland's North One in June was miserable. I mean, I, it was 100, it was, yeah, anyway, yeah, yeah. You're on that risk with July and August, and late even late June.
We can also look at Portland's schedule, hopefully they don't wait too long, but...
They try for the last weekend of the month, but they're not always on the last...
The last or the fourth, or does it matter, the last or the fourth? Because sometimes they'll be...
Oh, well, probably the fourth, that's what it is in September, but, yeah. But they don't always, you know, sometimes it's other events come up, and they juggle them like, yeah.
And their events are, you know, it's five hours long, right? Five hours long, you know, I guess that's something also.
If we have a shorter rate, we can have a shorter, yeah.
I think they're 10 to four or 11 to four. 11 to four, yeah.
Yeah, 10 to two, four hours.
Yeah, I think that depends on the route that's designed and how many square mi, you know, how many miles it is, rather, and, yeah.
Well, the later, like, we did noon to four, then you're reducing that conflict with churches, right? I were pushing it a little bit later, so that's...
But that's right at the time when churches start getting out, but...
It all depends on the church, but yeah.
And it all depends on the route and how many churches are running around.
Right.
So like King Road, I can only think of one offhand, but there may be more. Big one up there, where we had the hazardous waste collection.
Did postcards last year, I'm sorry, I don't remember, did they go to all the mailboxes in Milwaukee?
They went to, so the first series was a brochure that went to, I believe, affected households that were a quarter mile from the route. Okay, so that was like the full-on Sunday parkways brochure, colored brochure. Then there was a route postcard that went to just folks that were on the route, just letting them know that, hey, this is happening. Then there was a door hanger that went to customer, or to residents on the route, and then we sent out, and those were all initiated by P-Bot, so P-Bot did all of those. We sent out a fourth postcard to residences and businesses along the route that said, hey, come on out and activate your front yards. So we're thinking of doing, we would do something similar.
And Portland is not going to do the door hangers. So they do the door hanger the first year of route, but then they don't do it.
That's right, that's right. So this year, folks won't get the door hanger, but they will get the brochure, my understanding, and they definitely will get the route notification soon, probably within the next week or so, because they do it six weeks out. And then we'll put, we have, we're actually almost finished with our piece of activating your front yard, so we'll do that again, because we thought that, that was a nice little touch. And believe it or not, there are still people that had no idea that this was happening. They're on the route, so...
I was in my neighborhood that ran over one of the barricades on the Pope's.
Oh, yeah, that was...
Clearly on that.
He was so irritated, wasn't he? That guy in that, was that like a Jeep thing or something?
Well, there was a guy next door to Water Tower Park who just kind of came out, and he was like barely awake, and he's like, what is all this? I'm like, we've got three pieces of mail on this, buddy.
He sat up in front of a woman's house who didn't understand what we were...
Right, right there, right there on that corner. And then there was the people in, over by Water Tower Park that moved her car and parked it in a place where she shouldn't, and her car got towed.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that took a lot of discussing amongst people for a long time.
Half the people come, lava, which was a lot of people, were like, well, you never told about this.
I was going to mention that as well. So last year and this year, there's a special mailing that goes to all those folks back there, because it's an especially tough section. I can just ask Nick, did you receive a mailing list? A special letter goes to them detailing what folks should do, and they got that last year.
Does it say in big red letters, must open, critical?
Taxation.
Your taxes are going up 100%.
That's me putting that on it, for sure, and they would open it.
Well, you know, and special thanks, special thanks to the mayor, too, from last year, because it personally chaperoned several cars through those, that was a super hairy technical section. The path wasn't built, not a fun place to be, and a lot of angry folks. And that goes back to, I mean, frankly, these events, they're not as well, I mean, I don't want to say well-received, but they're not as well-known as they are in Portland, so that level of animosity of it being a nuisance could actually, will probably be more heightened from the city of Milwaukee than in Portland, because they're used to this for 10, 10 years, they've been doing it.
Let people know it's coming.
Unfortunately, we have, and I was looking at alternate routes and, you know, potential routes, I was looking, poring over a map, and in Portland, the city is, or at least on the east side of Portland, the city is such a nice grid that you always have an alternate way to go. In Milwaukee, you don't, you know, we have a lot of little stubs and little things where you don't...
A lot of call to sacs.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, no, it's challenging. No, it's challenging. So I, and absolutely, Councilmember Parks, the outreach is going to have to be really heightened.
Oh, yeah.
But at the end of the day, it's really just, they have 10 years on Milwaukee of doing this. I mean, folks know that it's Parkway's season inherently.
Yeah.
So, good. I think marketing and branding, there's some points in the memo that we talked a little bit about that. But I think we have that, that's one, that's one aspect where I felt we were really in control of our partnership these past couple of years. I think we really know our audience, we know how to communicate with them, we have some really great tools. I think volunteer recruitment is going to be a challenge, because, again, going back to the Portland side of things, they have a steadfast group of people who are really passionate about bicycling in these events. And they have a, they have a database of these folks. And we do, too, to some extent.
Bike Milwaukee and all of their folks that they communicate with.
We do, but when you look at the size of Portland and the bicycle advocates, they tend to just have more.
But I would say that having, you know, been at, volunteered at several of their events, I would not characterize all their volunteers as cyclists. I think there are people that just like the events.
I agree. I'm not a cyclist, and I think they're great.
They're not particularly cyclists.
I agree with you 100%. And our challenge is, we don't have the institutional memory for folks to like these events. So to get the number of volunteers that we're going to need for this event, I'm telling you right now, it's going to be something we've never had to heard before. It's going to be a challenge.
Year-long marketing.
Right. And a backup plan in case we can't get the volunteers.
And it sounds like Nick, Ian, and Steve will be joining us as volunteers. We also need to take some responsibility to train and get some of our family members out to help as well.
Yeah.
We all have people who can-
Yeah, I think also making sure that, I mean, just kind of back to the marketing piece, I mean, making sure that people are aware that it's not just a cycling event.
Exactly.
Like you said, so many of the volunteers and so many people that we saw were, they were walking and we saw-
Yeah, well, I sent you the stats and this was their biggest walking event.
Yeah, that's right. And we can, should really focus in on that. That would be really beneficial.
And I think that, you know, they hit up churches and school groups, PTOs, to take, you know, adopt intersections. And then they can, like, people noticed what the Rotary did last year, like, they were along Monroe between downtown and 224. And so they were doing like two or three intersections, but at one intersection, they had a tent with their literature and their blah, blah, blah. And that's a way to tap into, you know, not just one-off volunteers, but trying to get some groups to volunteer. It seems to me like, you know, if we, you know, PTOs-
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll-
Situations could be made at a lot of those places, too, not just, you know, asking for volunteers, but ending up by asking for volunteers.
Yeah, and so much of that, a lot of that engagement, we plan on help, getting some assistance to help us with that, because of the magnitude of this event. So the volunteer assistance, even route coordination logistics assistance, engaging in outside services. Because for us, too, and that's something that we'll segue in towards the end of the conversation.
So other than staff, is there like an ad hoc committee that, you know, year to year, you know, a different, a committee is appointed? Have we had that in the past? Is that something that we should think about for, at least for 2018? I mean, 2017's probably almost a wrap by now, you know? But, you know, there's probably a lot of people in the community that might want to just volunteer to help with details and maybe being in charge of getting other volunteers for other areas, or whatever has to be done, the things we do with everything else.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
We have, we have a handful of folks who have been involved with this, hands-on a lot for the last two years. So, you know, building upon that, I think, is important. I think it will take time. I mean, I think this first year, we might struggle a little bit. Depending on how long the route is, on the volunteers, we need, if we need 150 volunteers, it's a big lift.
Think about how many people come out for our Earth Day.
Yeah, exactly.
It's true. The interesting thing, the interesting thing about that, though, for some reason, this is a harder sell. And, you know, and I've talked to a lot of volunteers because I'm in the middle of it all. People see the Earth Days, like, I can come out and I can leave whenever I want. I can come for 45 minutes, I can pick up a truck, you know, do my thing and go anytime I want. Getting someone to sign up for a shift that's fairly intensive, I mean, some of these intersections-
People are going to be yelling at you.
Some of these intersections, take some pretty thick skin.
Running over your barriers.
I think some people are a little bit hesitant to say, oh, I'm going to be, you know, I'm going to volunteer new traffic control. Yeah, that's kind of one of those things, I think, is a little scary.
You know what, we should have Yvonne make a video. Because Yvonne has been volunteering for Parkway's for years, and she loves having an intersection.
And she had her work cut out for Ron Jackson.
She had this terrible intersection down here.
And it was-
So, um, yeah.
Had we not had the-
We had a couple of, Yvonne, Yvonne, Gwen, Nicole Perry, they're the ones I know of who've been volunteering this year at Portland events.
And, you know, I know we're gonna, I think, we're going to talk a little bit more about this year in just a little bit, but it just also, just occurred to me that there's not been one word mentioned at my Rotary Club meetings about assisting this year. I don't know if it's not on their radar, if they haven't been asked, I don't know what's going on, but-
Joel has signed you guys up already?
Has he? Wasn't on our list if we had.
Well, there's an interest form, he's not officially signed up. There's like an interest form you can fill out, so it's like on their radar. They tend to like really, as soon as the next one's over for Portland, they'll like go full bore with ours, but they usually kind of wait till their, you know, one before it's over.
Yeah, because we got a list today of community service things coming up in the next, like, three months, and it wasn't anywhere on there.
I didn't mean to throw Joel under the bus.
You know, yeah. Okay, Joel.
So, yeah, so really, volunteer recruitment engagement, I think that's going to take some work. And I anticipate us engaging, like I said, in some outsourced services for that. So, because I think that there's an opportunity to draw some people from Portland who've actually, since we're so close in and we're such nearby close neighbors, that I think there will be folks who have volunteered for Portland events who will want to share that enthusiasm to come to Milwaukee, so.
Some of our people volunteer for the Portland events all the time, you said, she's been doing it for a long time. I know you've done it for a couple of years now.
That's right. So moving along, I'll just, the budget so far, we've identified, we've currently been paying, so our first year, last year, we paid Portland $20,000 to participate. I didn't bring that budget with me, and I apologize, I can email it to you, but it represented about, I would say, I think the Milwaukee-Sellwood event, they had a line item of about almost $100,000. And I think our contribution was 20. And then we, I wrote some grants to Cultural Tourism Committee to get for a lot of our entertainment and marketing, so I covered all that with about, I don't know, $14,000 or so in grants. This year, I got less, I got about $11,000 or $10,000, which I can make work. So, and this year, we're paying another $20,000 to participate. But again, that is, was really just the kind of somewhat ballpark cost to contribute into Portland's expenses to extend the route. We expect this, depending on our, the size of our route and the complications and obstructions, a minimum of probably $20,000 to $25,000 will need to be invested, and it might be double that, depending on the magnitude of the event and the richness of it, the competitiveness of our cultural tourism requests, the sponsorships and donations. One of the things that Portland has that it's taken them a couple of years to secure is they have Kaiser as their presenting sponsor. It's their 100K sponsor.
This will be our own events, we'll be able to-
Right. We haven't, that's a good point, Mr. Mayor, we haven't been able to engage Providence, Milwaukee because of that conflict, which is completely understandable. Now, we have an opportunity. So as we, as we talk about that sponsorship solicitation piece, that's where I really think the council could, you know, help us come in to that plan. And your connections in the community in terms of opening those doors, and we can help put together a much more robust, yet simple sponsorship package and that, which involves different details. But, yeah, I think, I think that's going to be, we don't know where to, how we, we don't know where that would go from this year, because we haven't had huge successes in getting our other events sponsored in past years. But that's not to say that's something that we don't work on and we work toward.
Would it be okay if I mentioned it to Keith Hyde tomorrow morning?
Absolutely.
Hey, Kate.
Huh?
What are you saying, yeah?
CCB, eh?
Yeah, so, exactly. And then, of course, we would follow up with the formal package. And this is, the good thing about having this discussion right now, as we're not even to our 2017 event, is, is once the head of the council says, hey, here's the green light, bring us back a more formal plan, we want to start working on this, like we did with Light Rail. We want to start working on this immediately after 2017 is done, because it's going to take us that full year. We started, I remember when we were planning Light Rail grand opening, I started that committee in December of '14. And it took us all the way up until the day. And we had TriMet as a big partner, and we threw a pretty great party, but it took a diligent couple of meetings a month for a 10-month period. And we had a similar budget, actually, so, or a little bit smaller, I think, around the $20,000 mark or $15,000 mark or something like that. So, the point being is, this is something that we need to, we've been lucky to have partner, Portland is a partner, and as we go out on our own, we'll need to start this process immediately.
Portland allocate $100,000 per event, or is, are some more expensive? Some Sundays are more expensive than others for them, and if so, what drives their costs?
I think that's a good question. I don't know internally that much about their budget, other than, yes, some budgets are different, some budgets cost less, some, yup, for different Sundays. And, but what drives their costs are, depending on intersections, that they have to hire certified flaggers, how many they need to hire.
I think that's-
It's also the amount of barricades needed and rented, it's, it's-
But I think they do an annual contract for that, so I do think that probably evens out over all five events, the barricades and the porta-potties and the, I mean, they-
Bike racks.
... annual contract, and so they don't probably spend different for the five events. But I do think the flaggers and the intersections, you know, where they have more dicey intersections, they have to have more, you know, hired flaggers is probably one of the differences. I would bet that the difference is not huge, though, from event to event.
Yep, I agree. Yeah, I agree, and-
Yeah, they have two consultants who do all the coordination for the volunteers as well.
Right.
With like route logistics and all that. And then four, I don't, this isn't included in there, they do have four, basically, one season, four full-time staff people just working on these events, so. Yeah, and they're not, it's interesting, because they really take-
It's three, Christopher, Linda Rich-
Alexis, Linda, Rich, and Mike, there's the engineer.
Oh, well, I don't think he's-
Well, yeah.
Yeah, he only, he plans and routes all of their, like, gets all their routes approved by their Bureau of Transportation, so all those, all their traffic control plans need stamps, and he's that sort of internal person, which, which we just did with the ODOT intersections with him. He actually prepped all our paperwork for us. So, yeah, so he's kind of behind-the-scenes guy, yeah. And then Neil and, as Jason mentioned, Neil and Phil, who play a very instrumental role in their operations. So those are their paid consultants.
But, I mean, basically, they've just, they have high-level folks working on the events. It's not just, you know, just a vet planner kind of, you know, folks. These are like, have planning degrees and, you know, the engineers get very involved and all that. So it's, you know, they take it very seriously, for sure.
Yeah. So just in closing, we, what Jason does, put on his memo, the whole celebration aspect and the evaluation plan, which I think is huge for us. So we need to really be mindful of how we capture those metrics and performance and how we report out. How we treat our volunteers, I think, is really important. Again, I was really impressed with Portland's, the way they treated their volunteers on the event, like, the way they celebrated with them towards the end, they were invited to an appreciation event, the things that they gave them, the support, the attention, I thought it was really, really a class act. And they're, obviously, you've seen their, their-
Final report.
Their evaluation report, which has, you know, several metrics in it, that's really, really well thought out. So these are all things that we would want to consider also and have as part of this comprehensive program, because it's an investment that the council is looking to make, and it's, we need to be able to measure that investment and how it works.
So they do a, I've never actually gone, all the times I've volunteered, but at the end of the day, they usually have just picked a watering hole where they tell all the volunteers, we're going to meet there and we're going to have a beer afterwards or whatever. And I don't know that they pay for it, I mean, it's just kind of a gathering place. But it does seem to me like we might want to do that on September 24th as a way to build some energy for next year, is we might want to have an after-party somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
So we might need a sponsor or something that can help us with that if we really want to do it nicely.
Well, I mean, I, well, I don't know that we have, well, again, I mean, that's the thing about, do we have to pay for it, or do we just have to create a gathering space and let it be, you know?
Or partially get a ticket.
Right.
We buy a cake.
Right.
And everybody gets, every volunteer gets a ticket.
I think it's very meaningful if it were to be paid, if at least one drink were paid, because it shows-
Buy a little bit of food, and they will buy their own beer. I don't know that the city can buy beer. We can talk about that. I mean, I-
I think I wanted to mention, was a name.
What do we want to name our event?
Yeah, that's a good point.
I saw those ideas, it's-
You know, Portland, we kind of brought this up to them, I mean, they don't really care if we call it a Sunday Parkway, necessarily, it's not like-
They're not going to sue us, we're taking it. But, I mean, how can we, how can we be more original?
Milwaukee rolls.
Sometimes Milwaukee walks and rolls.
Are we committed to Sunday?
That's a question for the council.
Different to the name.
And the name, yeah.
Good one.
Yeah.
You know, mildly, honestly, to be honest with you, Sunday Parkway is kind of a hard thing to sell to people, because not a lot of people ever knows what that means.
Right.
So when I think about it, in terms of selling this product to people in Milwaukee over time, it's kind of, it seems like the name should kind of ring true of what it really is, that we're trying to accomplish. So, and I don't have any answers for what it should be called, I just think it would be nice to have a name that you immediately know, kind of what that is.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
We can certainly bring up, we can bring some, yeah, we can bring some ideas before you, just something for you to think about, that it all, it all ties into branding, the packaging, the product, the event, so. Yeah, but all these little details that we've had furnished for us.
Of the ones you suggested, just to throw this out, I like Open Streets and Summer Streets the best.
Yeah.
I like Open Streets, for me, to me, are sort of exclusive, you know, the car-free Sunday thing might not sell all that well, the silent Sundays and this, and I also, in terms of, for me, something that's important is alternative transportation. So scenic Sunday sort of, to me, connotates this idea that, you know, biking and walking is really only for sort of entertainment or, you know?
Recreation.
Recreation and not for these other reasons, so.
Yeah.
We could make it an acronym, because we're great at government, and call it ATP Day. Alternative Transportation. The mayor would like that, I'm sure.
So we have spent an hour on this part of the discussion, just to let you guys know. I don't know if we have some questions for this year's event that you guys want to talk about, or if you want to move on to the next topic. It's up to you.
And where, is everybody good on this year's event? Do we need more conversation on that? No?
I guess so.
All right, take your time. All right, great job. Maybe think about, if you didn't get questions answered, maybe send out an email, say-
Sure.
Or you might think about the brainstorming names soon.
Is this year's event on a day when we have a community booth at the farmer's market?
The 24? Is it the second or fourth? That's a good question. Let me see.
I mean, if not, could we?
If it's the fourth or the, second or fourth Sunday, then it would be.
It's the fourth.
Oh, it is the fourth.
It is, we do.
You're right.
We absolutely do.
You do have it.
Okay, yeah, I don't remember. I forget.
Well, that's good, yeah.
I wonder if the volunteers realize that.
Yeah, you'll need a longer volunteer.
We might need more people.
You might need a second, a third shift, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't even think about it.
Yeah, so, okay, well, so I think we'll work with Ann to get this more formalized on the agenda to kind of outline some specifics.
You can put me on the schedule, I'm not, I'm in town, and then Sunday Parkway is the only thing on my schedule. But if we're going to do, I mean, we have a community booth, but we're going to need more people there than just, you know, normal.
We have you on the 224 Monroe interchange. We have you on the technical interchanges.
Wherever you want to put me, I don't care, just tell me. I don't have to do a campaign booth this year.
That's right, that frees up some folks as well from-
Yeah, and Karen's not going to do one, so, so, well, I told her I'd help her out.
So, yeah, okay, we'll bring it back then and get, get something a little more formalized after the event, after this year's event.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go grab Jordan.
Can we take a little?
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break while you grab, uh, Jordan, one more quick, just so the people watching know, our agenda noted that we were going to go on air at 6:15, but there's no planning commission meeting this evening, so we will continue to practice live this evening.
Oh, okay. So which means we have to eat on air.
Yeah.
Unless we take a recess, which the mayor just said we did, so.
Do you want to eat in five minutes?
No. Not eating. And I did quarterly around-the-room reports at Chamber of Public Policy yesterday, and it was nice to be able to say, we're getting so many permits, you know, so much planning commission stuff, so much development.
All right, we're back on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Joining me this evening is Jordan Inwa, our public affairs specialist, and Jordan will be talking to you a bit, a bit about his project for his graduate thesis that he worked on regarding rebranding and identity. So, Jordan, feel free to take it over.
Thanks. Thanks for listening tonight and letting me recap the project. If you didn't know, or can't remember back that far, I'm sure you hear a lot of these presentations and have a lot of meetings, so, just so you know, I was getting a master's degree in strategic communications through the University of Oregon, and I chose the city of Milwaukee as part of my final thesis project, as a brand-identity-focused project that will bring into alignment the city's current logo and color palette, things like that, and we'll talk about more of like the story and values and mission, things like that. And then also, I'll be presenting you with a strategic recommendation for a potentially new logo, and you chew on that a little bit, see what you think. So, just so you know that where we're gonna go, I'll just kind of present a brief overview of my research, which includes academic and then one-on-one interviews with members of the community, and it also includes some Milwaukee history into it. And then I'll go over the first part, which is the brand identity, to help with the city's current brand identity and logo and things, and then show you some concepts. So, just to kind of touch base on, on why it's even important to have a good, strong brand identity, I mean, essentially, Milwaukee has its own identity whether we like it or not, and it's different from somebody coming to pay a ticket, to a volunteer, to an elected official, to a staff member, and just somebody living with their family in the neighborhood. It's better to take a more proactive approach and try to help frame that and manage that perception and, and help bring a lot of, more of those into perspective, so people know how everyone's sort of thinking and, and give a better image overall of the city. A good brand identity will also bring, bring people together and strengthen our bonds, creates loyalty with people, and it also helps, you know, neighbors kind of come together under sort of a common banner, if you will, for example. And then, it also helps us when we're trying to promote ourselves within the region, helping people know who we are, where we are, and kind of what we're all about. And a really good brand will also help create its own advocates. If people are on board and relate to it, then they're happy to help promote it for us. And this was my approach as I was going through this, this process and this project. I looked primarily at three different types of branding. The first was corporate, which I was using that one for primarily its multiple stakeholder approach, something like a Johnson &amp; Johnson or just kind of like a big corporation like that. Each product has its own different audiences and different perceptions and expectations, and that's very much relatable to the city with our different departments and our different services. A lot of these brands are intangible for corporations, much like ours, I mean, there are a lot of people here doing things that not a lot of people know about. And also, corporate brands are very professional, usually they spend a lot of money developing them and really dialing them in. I also look at some other city branding, especially for their values and emotions, and it kind of just how you relate to your city in general. And then, another one that I thought was really helpful during this project was place branding. And there's actually a lot of cities now that are focusing on using place branding when they're talking about their city and their region and their community. And some of the key aspects of place branding is using things in the community that are, they would appeal to a really broad base, and it's usually something that's not like infrastructure that needs to be maintained necessarily, like you wouldn't say like a shopping center or like a certain road, or even sometimes a bridge, because those can fall into disrepair and your brand will also fall into disrepair. Typically, place branding uses something historically significant, and something that different groups and people of different ethnicities can all relate to on equal grounds.
So, like you mentioned, the Mount Hood Territories reflect this county.
Yeah.
Or St. Louis uses the arch.
Yeah. Yeah, something that's gonna be pretty longstanding and, you know, pretty significant. I also did a series of interviews with several people in the community, and it was one-on-one, usually in a location, not at City Hall. Used a series of questions, typically about 10, open-ended. I was always trying to frame it so there wasn't a whole lot of bias or me interjecting my own opinion in it, and just letting people respond to the, the questions. And these interviewees represented a lot of different people, a lot of different backgrounds, volunteers, people who just moved here, people of families, people who have families that are more established, people with backgrounds in arts and culture, and there was even a few people, or two people who were also staff members but also resided in Milwaukee. And so, from the interviews, I got a lot of really interesting themes that popped up, that I, I kind of maybe inherently knew were important, but were really brought out through the, through the answers. Basically, everybody I talked to touched on these bullet points, which was on history. History is clearly very important to people who live in Milwaukee. They really want to preserve their small-town feel. But there's also this really strong sense of just being real, I mean, and, and kind of acknowledging like things how they are. And no one really ever sugar-coated anything to me, which was kind of surprising, and they weren't trying to like play it up with, as, as something it wasn't, or try to, yeah, just sort of embellish things. It was, it was pretty, it was pretty fun to hear the answers, but, and it wasn't like a source of, like a source block. It was like, yeah, that's how we are, and that's kind of, that's how we like it, and it is what it is type of a thing. The theme of being a kind of like a blue collar, blue-collar town came up a lot, and, and this sense of kind of grit and determination, that also came along with the authenticity, like acknowledging the stumblings of the past or, or things that maybe didn't go necessarily as planned, but just being really optimistic that maybe it didn't work out, but we, we know it will, like, and we, we think that everything's gonna be great. And there was a lot of people talking about arts and culture in Milwaukee and how that's sort of like a blooming area for the city. And, and I guess along with the gritty is like the determined, optimistic. And then, the sense of civic engagement's really easy in Milwaukee, it's just, it's really easy to, to come and have your voice heard, to, you know, get on a board of permission, and, you know, even if you have a city councillor or mayor, it's, you know, if you can see the process unfolding and you see it work for other people, and it seems like a very, a very approachable thing. And one of the questions I wanted to, to bring up, that I thought just had some really interesting answers, is, I asked, I posed a question, if Milwaukee was a person, what type of a person would he or she be? And everyone kind of described a different person, but it was almost the same type of thing. There was an, like, a teacher, which was really good. And then, there was also this sort of sense of like kind of a, a down-home kind of feel, but with also like an edge. Somebody said a tattooed grandmother, but she's really sweet and makes you nice cookies and you enjoy talking with her. An aging hipster who's still pretty cool and maybe does some modeling on the side, a guy in his late 40s who has a family and maybe works in an office but can also shred still and, you know, plays gigs in downtown Portland on Saturday nights. And then, the one in the middle is actually an image that a staff member made. It's a combination of Lotwoodcombe with a hipster, but it was like.
Touring, touring Europe.
Yeah, touring Europe, wearing fancy scarves, and.
And cool bags.
Yeah. But it, but it's the sense of like old and new, you know, nice, edgy, sweet, kind of a, sweet but kind of a curmudgeon, you know, like that was even something like, you know, we're kind of curmudgeons, but we also, you know, we, you know, we're really kind of go with the flow, we're easy, easygoing type of a, type of a thing. So, and then, this was another really interesting answer. When I asked, I asked a question both about what's one of Milwaukee's greatest assets and what's a potentially overlooked feature, everybody basically said Riverfront Park, and the Willamette.
Nice.
There was a few other, like, you know, things in there, but, but at least everybody mentioned that as one of, one of the things. So, when I, I took the research from academic and scholarly research and then I coupled that with the, the interviews and, and what I got from those responses, I, I kind of got those and I boiled them down into creating a foundational story for Milwaukee, which we haven't had yet. And this is something that a lot of organizations do to kind of help people understand the organization, but then also see where the organization's heading and kind of what they value. So, this would help staff, but also help the people who are living in Milwaukee residents just kind of know what, what it's all about, and something that, that they can remember. So, this is maybe a little long for a slide, and if you have trouble reading it, let me know. But this is the story that I, that I came up with, that I thought represented the city, and it has some tongue-in-cheek things to it, so feel free to laugh.
I like it.
Thanks. And I did research in Lotwoodcombe, did think that Milwaukee was going to be the New York City of the West Coast.
Did he really?
Yeah. And it's, it's also funny looking back, thinking that he did name it after Milwaukee, because he just thought that was a beautiful city, and just, just to, you know, just to name it after that is kind of funny.
Okay.
But I was trying to, you know, combine all those different facets of, you know, this really stark contrast of values and imagery and perceptions and kind of boil it down to one story that, that might be a little funny, kind of like what people said to me, and then kind of really show us who we are. But, and then I have some missions and some values and that kind of tagline, too, that we're hoping to use for some things. So, the first mission, this was created to embody like kind of where we want to go, but, and, but using more ambiguous words that, I mean, flourish to somebody can mean totally different things, or being lively, I mean, it could just be athletic, but it could also be just vibrant, like, you know, music, events, activities. And it, it kind of moves away from a lot of those taglines that people have about, you know, live, work, play, that a lot of cities are using, and creating something that's very unique for us. And then, this tagline has kind of been floating around in Milwaukee, but I think it's a really good one that we can start using maybe in social media and some other campaigns. And we've seen it at the high school and even Beer Store Milwaukee, they, they have like a little organ symbol with IE in the middle of it, talking about how we're unique, we're, we are IE, we're not the EE, like, we're different. You know, we're, we're our own city, we're our own people, we do things our own way. And if I can comment on that, we learned that this was when we were opening the Orange Line, when we were engaging some of the students at the high school, we learned this is something, this is a tag, a local tag, that a lot of our millennials happen to be using and writing and describing. And we didn't either until we went down through that process. And so, it was really interesting to, to kind of hear it come out, and it, and it's sort of interesting. And it would be a good one, too, like, to kind of, you know, you'd already have some support behind it, some momentum, and to kind of adopt it formally and start using it, it would really take off really quickly.
When I've seen somebody do, I think, I think, actually, it was, well, anyway, I've seen somebody do K-I-E, the key.
Yeah, I've seen a few people do that, too, yeah. And then, to kind of get honed in on just four values, when I was doing some research, usually people kept their values between three and six typically. I thought four summed up what Milwaukee was all about. And these values would be used by staff when they're doing projects to kind of incorporate in, also by just the people who, you know, they want to call this place home, and if they, you know, relating to these values that are pretty broad-based, but, but also specific to us. And just so you know, I mean, we, I was creating this basically simultaneously as the visioning, and so, it, this incorporates some of the things of visioning that I think people were already talking about anyway, but it doesn't necessarily address that like directly, but these things do match up in a lot of regards to different priorities and goals. And I think if these were to be like officially adopted by the city and used, they would, they would go pretty well hand-in-hand with maybe just a few minor modifications.
I'm gonna just pause for a minute. We have some graphic slides coming up, and I want to make sure, I don't believe the TV's on the right setting, so I'm going to just adjust the TV very quickly. Yeah, I didn't think so. Apologize, it'll take me one second. Picture. Okay, thanks.
So, next I took, just to give you a little history of our, of the city's logo, this is a little bit of a rough timeline of how the logo's kind of progressed in Milwaukee, using some good research from Scott. So, the city officially, or they had town seal to begin with, and became the city seal. And then, in 1962, they adopted the dogwood. The Milwaukee Junior Chamber of Commerce suggested it to the city since they had, Milwaukee had what was widely believed to be some of the biggest dogwoods on this side of the country. And that theme of the dogwood continued through the 80s with some modifications, you know, kind of modernizing it. And then, there was the one that you see from 1995 that has been pretty widely used for a while, that has the three dogwoods. And then, it was also supposed to represent the, the city's. And then it was also supposed to represent the, the city's street grid, right? And then the Sentinel was used and then it seemed like it was used, from documents I've seen, used interchangeably or interchangeably. They kind of used both of them for a while until 2008, which I believe Grady was the primary coordinator on that and gave it another updated look to the dogwood. And then most recently, we changed the logo on the city website and, and certain publications here and there to this a little bit more streamlined, modern-looking one where it takes away the, the wording on the outside and just uses the middle dogwood, takes away some of the gradient and then uses a more updated font. It's called Railway, but it's actually a font that looks really similar to a font that the city of Milwaukee was using in the 50s. So it's a little, which I thought was really appropriate because people like to think about city history, but also talk about being modern, so it fits with those things. And then we eliminated the green and brown palette and started using this more updated one, the navy gray and sort of a cream, cream off-white. And so I took all of these things and put them into this branding guide, which I can hand out to you now.
Okay.
Sure. So in this guide, it, it helps everybody, staff, council members, volunteers, if they're doing any work for us, any sort of outside partner agencies, use our logo and use it well and make sure the integrity of the brand stays as it is. It also formalizes our color palette, so when other departments and staff are creating things, it'll all look cohesive. So when people are putting things out in the community, you can kind of just see that color palette and be like, oh yeah, that's Milwaukee. Like you don't even need to see the logo necessarily. It also creates some fonts that people can use to also further the cohesion. And then included an editorial style guide, which helps rein in also kind of the different uses of, like, you know, tells everyone the acronyms we're going to use, different words we're going to use, how do you write AMP, PM when you're writing something? Do you put the dots? Do you not put the dots? You know, just little things, but like once, well, when it all dialed in, it helps.
Standardize our communications messaging.
And this is a, a thing that a lot of organizations do that just, yeah, help, yeah, help the brand and, and this is one is specific for Milwaukee. And then it also includes how, you know, how best practices we're writing on the web. Has some templates in there that we, that we can put up kind of big on the screen too for you to take another look at. And then it also includes some engagement principles that I felt were really helpful for, for staff using it that reinforces the idea of like how we do community engagement, community involvement, talking about transparency, being honest, you know, keeping a positive, you know, even tempered mood while you're doing things. And then thinking about tomorrow, like just being proactive in your approach. And this will really help people just, it should help people in general with everything. I mean, just talking in person, when you're writing things, when you're putting things on the web, help communication, just facilitates it really well. And so some of the templates that you can see in the book or in the guide too is a project template for, you know, not, not everyone has the time or capacity to design something every single time for a new project or new program. So something formalized like this will help just simplify the process and then it'll, it'll look like the rest of the brand. A new letterhead that, that uses the logo and, and this is something that if the city decided to pursue it, they could, you can buy stationery like this that already has like the logo and the blue thing at the bottom with, you know, the, the address stuff. And then you would just pass that out and then you could print on it without even having to design it in your computer, you just print it. And then it kind of updates the city's business card to give it a little bit more unconventional look. I mean, people do this type of thing to their business cards anyway, but the city hasn't had anything like that, but, you know, helps, helps promote the logo and also kind of helps our card stand out from anybody else. And it's funny because, you know, things like this don't actually cost any more money than a regular business card. You just have to make sure you're using a company that can do rounded corners or align it vertically instead of horizontally.
Just to throw out, three years my business card had to flood it back.
Oh, did it?
And it was problematic when you were handing it out, oh yeah, I needed to give you that address or I was going to write that thing. There's no place on the card to write that piece of information that, so, which is often how we end up using our card.
That's true, yeah.
Reminder to send me that thing.
Yeah. And I, I seem, I think there's police that have, different police agencies have like a little, like a couple lines to write down like case number and like officer name and it's just like a whole block, something like that. So yeah, that could also be looked into, you know, if maybe you have a different back if you're someone who, you know, passes them out like that all the time and for other staff or for most staff with something like this. So, and then the second part of the, the project was really looking in at, I mean, does Milwaukee even need a new logo? And I, I went into this looking like, you know, like is the dogwood fine? I mean, I like the dogwood, it looks nice, it's not like a bad-looking logo. But there's some certain points about logos and brands that you need to look at just to kind of make sure it's relevant and it actually speaks to everybody. And it's sort of like a past, present, future type approach. It should, it should definitely capture the spirit of the community, the history and, and then also represent what you're doing now and the current community composition. So logos often, not often, but you know, every once in a while will change periodically to reflect the community composition. And then also your aspirations, like, I mean, if you, you know, it doesn't always have to be exactly where you are now, but like something you want to aspire to in the future. And so just to, to kind of reiterate, using this approach, again, this was a slide you've already seen, I, I came up with a couple of concepts working with Gabe Storm, who's been doing some more other branding and marketing and so it falls in mind, the stuff we're already doing, to kind of propose a different approach to the logo using, using the findings. So, so here's, here's the three that we've been working with recently. And these all focus on the river because of how much everybody felt connected to it. So many people talked about the river and it's like the only spot in the whole city where you can actually touch the river. And that's actually really unique for a lot of cities, like you don't have access like that, like direct access to the river. And then using a style for the logo that's a little bit nostalgic, it looks a little bit kind of like a, you know, a national parks badge almost, like a WPA type style to hearken back to that nostalgia, but then also looking a bit modern and, because this type of art has been coming back recently. And, and using an unconventional shape, just because Milwaukee is not conventional by any means and, and we need something that reflects that. So, and along with that, there are, it's a purposeful color palette. Using color theory, I used these three primary colors. There is obviously green in the other logo and that would be used something like a, like a, like a secondary color. But these three really communicated the values that I heard, especially in the interviews, of the teal with open communication and just creativity and kind of calming. And then the dark blue with nostalgia, but also trust and authenticity. And that pop with the kind of yellow, orange, gold color of optimism. I, and it just seemed like those three all kind of really worked together and, and really represented what Milwaukee was all about. It was a little, little amazing, I guess, for me, just kind of how, I mean, I honestly did, I asked people, like, I didn't ever ask anybody if we should leave the dogwood, but people kind of mentioned the dogwood as we were talking about this and saying like, the dogwood is fine. And that was about the best one I heard.
The most of bringing endorsement.
It was, yeah, we've had it. You know, we've had it for a long time, it's fine. Somebody used the analogy of the dogwood, like how it looks bad most of the year, but then it blooms, but then it goes to, like a cycle. And it's like, I don't-
It's short-lived.
Yeah, like, yeah, things go well in Milwaukee for a while and they get bad, then they get good again. You know, we always know it'll get good again, it'll get bad, so, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I think, I change is probably in order. I mean, it, the, the dogwood does represent history for sure and it's spot-on with that. But I think maybe current community composition and sort of future aspirations really, it, it doesn't necessarily embody those things. And so I think something might be, like that would be in order for, for a logo. Does anybody have any questions or want more clarification on anything or?
I have, I have a comment, if I may. I mean, I think this is, this is really excellent, excellent work. And quite frankly, it takes me back just a few years ago to the Chamber of Commerce when we went through a similar branding with a consultant and, you know, the whole thing. And we ended up with a style guide.
Yeah.
And the value of it was amazing. I mean, at first I was like, wow, why do we have to have something like that? We kind of know how we want this to go. But even making sure we had the right, how do you say, that Pantone-
Oh, yeah.
-colors, because we had this dark green that could come out like five different ways almost, you know, depending, and it also came out differently depending on what kind of paper it was on. So you have to think about, think about that. One of the other things that we did that may be inherent in these templates, but I don't, I don't see it, is the margins and, you know, top, top and bottom margin and the indentation and all that, so that everything ends up looking similar and you know, you know at a glance, that's where it came from, is the city of Milwaukee.
Yeah.
And that.
Yeah, for the templates, that, those would be built in for sure.
Yeah.
They would have the margins and then even the logo.
The padding.
Yeah.
The padding for the logo.
I, I really liked the page in here where it says use these word, these, these one or two words instead of these.
Yeah.
It's like, okay, I'll pay attention to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Technically, that's, I mean, it's sort of a federal requirement to use plain language, but it also just, I mean, it, it makes things so much easier. I mean, it takes so many questions out and it helps just reduce staff time, like, you know, trying to help people go through these different things, so.
Well, and some of the examples you used, I mean, they're, you know, they're just pretty short, quick words, but then there's all those people that like to use the three and four syllable words all the time, you know, it's like, yeah, they're doing that.
And if you notice, when Jordan writes for the web and writes for the pilot, we, we stay with that style to, so we can make sure that we can appeal to the broad-based audience and, and not have any, so, you know, socioeconomic impediments-
Yeah.
-that are involved with maybe not comprehending or reading at a higher level, so.
So did this go out to staff?
It hasn't yet. This was going to be tested through, through all of you first.
Okay.
Just looking for feedback, yeah. And then also just kind of, you know, see if there's, yeah, anything we need to add, you know, if you guys see something that's missing or something that's important to you that you'd like to see in it. This was, yeah, mainly a draft that we're working towards formalizing. I mean, if, if anything else, like this would definitely be put in place for staff, finalized versions to get everything cohesive. And then the logo recommendation of that, that's something that can be looked at, you know.
Yeah, they're almost like two separate kinds of things. You get the style guide with the logo as you have now and, and yet, but the style guide, wherever the logo is, the style guide is still going to be the workable document.
Yeah.
And you just change the logo in it. Because the logo discussion, I think, takes probably a lot more, just different parts of discussion and maybe with different people or whatever. But you did a great job.
Yeah.
And on the ideas for logo.
Yeah, the logo and the, the style guide is something we would like to see. I mean, we work, we use it now because we feel it's important. And we don't have one in the city and most cities have these things, okay?
Yeah.
I've been working towards this for three years now and it's here.
Yeah.
I'm happy about that. Secondly, we do plan on, as we roll out, as we, the idea is to get the feedback of council and whether this is something that it's like, no, we love the dogwood logo, let's just stay as is. Again, this is Jordan's project that in the, in the real world, you mentioned value, council member parks, intrinsic value, well, financial value. This is a package that if we were to engage Wyden and Kennedy would cost us probably between $40,000 and $60,000. So Jordan has started this work that, you know, really has, has a lot of actual financial value to it for the city. This was something that wasn't necessarily a, an initiative or direction from council, but for me and my group and our communications team and the overall approach, it's, when he approached me with the idea and concept, I said, please. And then when we brought it to you beforehand to discuss.
I think it's a really good foundation for all staff and for anybody that communicates on behalf of the city.
Yeah, so the thought process would be fill out the council and see how you feel towards this process and this, in this trajectory, go back to staff, vet it internally a little bit, and then bring it before you in a public meeting for you to take action on, depending on what, what are the outcomes of that process are.
You're talking about a logo?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Is that a template for-
Yeah, I think it's two different questions.
Yeah.
I think there's two different questions. One is, is this concept of having templates, sort of rules, sort of-
A style guide. Have a style guide.
You want a style guide. I think the style guide is critical and I think I'd like to spend more time digesting this, but just the first one, I think is really good. Logo-wise, I'm not wed to the dogwood, but what I would say is logo is something that you hope to live with for a very long time. So I would either spend a lot of money hiring a high-end firm to develop a logo for us or do a logo competition with significant, some prize money, so we attract the level of artists that are going to bring us that logo.
Well, well, yes and no. Yes, your logo doesn't have to be forever. It can have, it can have iterations depending on where you want to be. A lot of times that's very common practice for cities because if you think about your city, the people who are living here now may not be living here, you know, you just had the community survey where you, where we found out zero to, over 50, almost 50% of our population has been in their homes for zero to five years. I mean, they could have come internally, but they may have come from the outside. So what does that original dogwood mean to those folks? And then these are, then we're also learning that 25% are seniors that have been in their homes for over 25 years. So what happens if that becomes an influx or change in that moving pattern? So it is for cities and it is sometimes commonplace to, to modernize their logo and their themes over time. So it is different between a city seal and an actual city logo. Like they can be two different things depending on where you are and what you're using it for, so.
Well, so we have this motto or whatever, Dogwood, city of the west. So obviously if we drop the logo, we drop that, right? So would we, would we replace that with something? Is that-
Yeah, you would replace it with something similar to like what was in here, like it's either a mission or, or something like that. But usually the, the motto that you have, it should be, it should be sort of reflective of what your city does, not necessarily what it has. So you would have like your aspiration or, yeah, your, your purpose for being a city or your purpose for keeping the community, you know, here. And, and so, yes, I mean, you would, you would definitely come up with something similar to, I would recommend something similar to what is our-
This likely community.
Yeah.
Or the BIE is a tagline that could be, that could accompany the logo depending on which application you use it in.
Yeah. You know, at a lot of meetings that I go to, it's, you know, go around the room, introduce yourself and you do your tagline, you know, or whatever. And I still say from four years ago, you know, the city of Milwaukee, the city that's moving forward. Everybody gets it and it has this vision in their brain and whatever. So the tagline, it wouldn't necessarily be that, but something like that, that, that has movement, that has energy, that has something intrinsic about the community itself.
Yeah. You really want it to be reflective of the community, what you're trying to do. And then there's a lot of, I mean, a lot of mission statements in our taglines, like, you know, Google's is don't be evil. I mean, it's just-
Which is the best one ever.
Yeah.
I love that. Especially considering what happened at Google this week.
Or others are have fun. I think it's at Disney.
That's Disney's, have fun.
There's, there's super simple, super to the point, very memorable. And, and I think-
I interrupted Angel earlier. I wanted to give her a chance.
Oh, I was just wondering if there was a template for, because one of the key ways that I think we communicate with, with the public is through our presentations, or your presentation rather, to city council.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if you had a template for PowerPoint presentations.
I do actually, yeah, I just, I hadn't put them in here yet because there's a couple that we work with and then, and then people have asked me for it, yeah. And I think that things are kind of getting more-
Because I'm still seeing, I'm seeing the newer ones.
Yeah.
I'm also seeing the older ones.
Yeah.
Like to me, that's sort of like, if, if they're not all the same, then it maybe sends a message that we're backing each other internally.
Yeah. Well, and that's when, like if-
There's a lot of good stuff to be said about consistency.
Yes.
Yeah.
When the, when the guide would roll out, I mean, that's when, yeah, you would say, here, here is like your shared drive of all the templates. If you're making a PowerPoint, use this one. And then, and to a degree, you, doing this brand identity, like you having these standards, you, you need to have a more of a centralized vocation for, some of these things will just run through just for like a, like a review before they go out, just to make sure that they need branding guidelines. So, yeah, if you were going to create some big brochure, you would run it through like some- someone like me or Mitch or someone like that, who would take a look at it, make sure everything falls within the parameters we set, and then you're like, yeah, sure, go ahead, print it, just print away, and then, yeah, just, yeah.
And that's what, and if I may, that's how we've been, have that process in place right now for our website. So we have this group of super-users called content managers, and they're trained on some of the language and tone and the look. So when they're content contributors, which is essentially any staff person with a computer, builds a page, that content manager in their department says, oh, this is good, but actually, let's replace utilize with use and do da-da-da with, you know, and kind of go through this. And as you're, I noticed your headline font is not sixteen point, it's actually twelve. And it just keeps that, for a website with twenty-two thousand pages, it keeps that standard rolling.
Yeah.
And that's, and obviously, for print and multimedia, I completely agree. I think that's, that's the target, so.
And then I think if, you know, for a new logo, looking at some of the concepts I came up with, yeah, I mean, you would definitely look for some input from staff and, you know, and put it out to the community to kind of, you know, comment. I would maybe caution a bit against maybe having a contest because those seem to sometimes end up not so great.
Not working.
And you can look at the city of Wilson built one of those ones.
There's always the caveat that we don't have to choose something from this contest.
Yeah, you're...
We get nothing good from this contest? We'll do it again if we hire somebody.
Well, if you have to give a reward, though, for what you've done, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I would not want to just have...
It's just a caution.
Well, I was just going to say, it's an option, but we know that in, you know, as you mentioned, the professional, like, engage that firm, that's really what the best practice would be. And in this case, what you got, and thank you, Jordan, what you got from Jordan is darn close to that for free.
Didn't I also hear Jordan say that he worked with Gabe Storm? And, I mean, we all tremendously admire the graphic looks that Gabe provides for us. And so, you know, I imagine with his input...
I was looking at the timeline again, and I have a question about, so I think it's kind of interesting, and so it essentially didn't have a logo until the sixties. And when I think of the sixties, I think of this sort of like heightened commercial, you know, like this advertising sort of time.
Mad hours.
Yeah, exactly. And then it changes, and then it's just changed sort of like every twenty years or so since then. Is that a typical lifetime for a logo? Do you know? Can you give us a sense for whether or not, you know...
That, I mean, yeah, I mean, for a city, most started out with some sort of seal, and then they would adopt a logo. Like, someplace like Beaverton, I worked there for a while in the same, one of the same roles, and they had, you know, like a logo that started, I think, like in the forties. And then, you know, they kind of moved back and forth. For the longest time, they had like a Beaver, essentially. And then they used, almost like a seal like that, like Beaver.
I designed it.
And then they adopted what they have now, which is sort of a multi-color, sort of fountain of firework-looking thing. But it seems like cities are sort of catching up finally to what more professional agencies and corporations are doing, because they are seeing the value of how it helps tell their story and help position themselves in the region, make them, you know, a bit more competitive when they're competing for business or when they're trying to attract new development, new residents, neighborhoods, things like that. So I think, yeah, for a city side, that's, that is a little, that's pretty close to what people have been doing, and they, people have been ramping up more recently.
So more, less time, like, yeah, okay.
And I believe council member Abma Metro just went through a rebrand, and their logo today looks nothing like it looked, I don't know, a year ago.
They changed the tagline, too.
That's right.
The logo, but instead of whatever it was, so people places open spaces, it's something different.
Well, and I had the opportunity to sit in on their discussion when they, when they were rolling out that logo and the concepts. And it was really interesting how, when you unpack everything in the new logo, it really represents what Metro is doing and what they're about. And when some folks looked at it and they said, what is this, this thing? It looks like a bunch of houses, then a river, then this or that. And I was like, well, exactly, it covers those points. But they have, of course, a style guide, and they have, you know, wear that logo, you just can't put that logo anywhere and stretch it. You have to have so much white space on each side.
Those are the important kind of things when it comes to a style guide.
I agree.
These colors, this size, this placement.
Yeah, we're long overdue.
All those, all those kinds of things. And when you don't have a document like that, it just gives people license to do whatever.
That's right.
Then they can't identify with your community because...
And that's still our seal, we still use that.
This, their...
Yep.
Yeah. But the seal, yeah, the seal doesn't necessarily change.
It's pretty, pretty boring, but that's what we use, in addition to the logo.
I know, like, you know, well, it's not quite the same thing in the last nineteen years now. The local chamber of commerce, they're on their fourth logo in nineteen years.
This says Town of Milwaukee. Does it now say city?
That's how we originally incorporated it, we were the Town of Milwaukee. And then, even within the first ten years, the word city and town are interchangeable in the twenties.
Now, not so much, okay, yeah.
Our seal now says Town, City, sorry, City.
Okay. I want to quickly point out, too, and Lisa had questions about the Centennial logo. It's kind of hard to see what some of those things are. Which is all, yeah. So I had...
Who was involved with this?
I had the honor of chairing the Centennial community.
Looks like CMI's logo.
And Ed Zuma was a member of that, and several other people who are great community people. And so, a point in time came when we did want something that was specific to that. So it was based on the fact that it was the confluence of the Three Creeks, and that we focused on the rivers, that's that first little quickly thing. River, yeah. The river, the Dogwood, and the Big Cherry. Yeah, those were the things we felt that Milwaukee was noted for. But you notice, river, so riverfront, river, you know, yeah, it's always right there, even when we did the visioning, number one thing, the river.
And that's, I mean, that's why I thought it was funny, too, is, I mean, that's what originally drew luck with coming to Milwaukee.
Yeah, with the river.
Saw the river and the bay here and just thought, this is the place for me. I got everything I can, went all in, went to Milwaukee, it was crazy, just did it anyway. And, I mean, it's also, it's, it works, you know, with the new council goals, too, focusing on Riverfront Park with that type of a logo. And, but I think, I just wanted to point out one thing that I think some people get confused about. Usually, when you design a logo, you want to design the logo last, like when you're doing a brand. You want to do all of the research, do all of the questions, put everything together, and then design a logo. A lot of times, you know, businesses are just quick to, for a logo, they want to create something that looks kind of cool, kind of flashy, but it doesn't stand the test of time. And so you want something that you have a lot of thought, but it's, it's gone through a good process, and it's something that, you know, it resonates with you. You can kind of create an emotional bond with it, you know, but, I mean, because that's what good brands do. I mean, you feel something when you use them or you see them or you're interacting with the organization.
Yeah, definitely. I think it's, I think it's very thoughtful, very...
Well, thanks, yeah. It's a lot of...
So is this something that we should work with the city manager on to maybe refine a little bit more and take it through its process? And, or if the council wants to hold off until there's a budget to go to a professional-type firm, or if you feel confident using...
Well, so I guess I would ask the question, since you're giving the point that you should do all of the other stuff before you do the logo, do we feel like Jordan's master's thesis is...
Well, building on the visioning, I presume Jordan's taken input from the visioning, right?
Yeah. And he did mention, yeah.
And you could always do, you know, you could, I mean, for me, I was constrained by time. I mean, it's kind of time-consuming to have to transcribe all the interviews and then boil them down into the theme. So I think, you know, if you were to maybe interview a few more people or even do some more community engagement, just kind of looking for some more similar input, you know, you could get more to back up, whatever, because you can want buy-in from the community.
Right.
But, yeah, you could, you could solidify it.
A lot of that came, we did a lot of that in the vision.
Yeah.
So it would be interesting to go back to a lot of that information and sort of look at it from this lens.
Yeah.
As a step, instead of the lens of what's our vision for 2040, look at it through the lens you're looking at it through to sort of parse out.
Well, and maybe when we adopt the vision, in a couple weeks, we...
This can be a part, there's...
We could say, we want a new logo. We want to think about a new logo, and we want to start that dialogue now that we've got the vision, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that we also have talked about working with David Levitin and Brett and some of the planning team, who's been so involved in the visioning process, just to make sure that this document and the concepts sort of resonate both directions and that, you know, they also are doing a lot of this work. And so it's just making sure that those pieces tie.
Yeah.
We're also going into the comp plan, and there's going to be a lot of outreach during that time. So there's also pieces around that. I think that the research is done. I think that Jordan did an exceptional job of talking to people, and I think he captured who we are. I think the grid and the blue collar and all those words, they felt real to me. They felt like why I came here. So there are pieces like that where I feel like the groundwork has been laid. But I do think that the community is going to care about this. We have a very engaged community. So making sure that we find a process on how we engage them around a logo is probably important. So that's what we talked about before we came out here tonight, was that we wanted to make sure we were going in a good direction for all of you. I know that we have a certain staff person at the table who would be absolutely downtrodden to see the end of the Dogwood. And honestly, I don't think he is along. And I want to be respectful of that. And I want to be respectful to you and to the community and to the staff and to others, just to make sure that everybody at least feels heard, whatever you guys end up adopting. So...
Well, that, I mean, when you, if we do engage a professional, that can actually be one of the...
Completely.
So they very often will come to you with ten or twelve different logo concepts, and they'll be very, either variations on a theme if you've gotten very specific about what you want to see, or here are ten or twelve different, it can be very different. So it could range from a new take on the Dogwood up to the river and the...
Yeah, or they'll look at it through the lens of people, planet, place, prosperity, and ask how that Dogwood sizes up with that versus like another concept. And I don't know.
Yeah.
I think we can take all the work Jordan did, and I think we can take the work of the visioning process and the work of the action items, and then the comp plan, and sort of say, okay, we've done a lot of research into where our community is at today. I think Jordan saved us half the fee.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Basically, what I did, but on a larger scale, there are probably several more staff members.
So I don't, I think that, I think we're halfway there. I think that at this point, it's a question of how we engage the community around that identity piece. And I would say you probably want to talk about the motto, you probably want to talk about the values, and you probably want to talk about the visual item. Ninety-eight percent of this, we're going to send to staff this week and say, hi, please edit. If you have concerns, call us. Otherwise, we're going to start using this probably a couple weeks.
Good.
Well, as you say, I'm going to put my own personal thank you for the apostrophes.
You're welcome.
This is my pet peeve, people generally, but the city in particular, there was a time when they, when the farmer's market first started using this lot behind City Hall, wherever it is, and the staff put out signs that said, Sunday's, you know, library parking, and they put apostrophes in Sundays. And I was just like, oh, my God.
Don't you just want to always correct Facebook accounts, too?
It only belongs to Sunday.
I also, I think that a couple of things came out tonight about this, right? So do, when Jordan and I had talked about this, the back, the blue back, we actually were talking about what happens if we shift the colors? What do we do as the background? So then do you put a white back? And so there may, that's great feedback as well, going into the style guide as to how we adopt that piece, too.
And I forgot to actually put in, I do have knockout versions of these logos. If we were going to get that grain, I could show you those versions. And they do have like a white, kind of, so they would stand out and pop on a...
We're going to figure it out.
Because I thought about this recently, because I just had to have cars printed, and I briefly toyed with saying, let's see if we can stuff the entire vision on the back of my car.
The answer is no. You're really, really... I once put an entire speech on the back of my car. Did you write it?
I also wanted to let you know, too, just in case there is a severe backlash about the Dogwood, there are cities that have, and like, an official seal, kind of like this thing that Scott has, it's the city of Milwaukee, like the old thing, which could be like a logo that would go on very, like, just like a few documents, like city council-type ones. And then a different one would be used for external marketing purposes, you know, other things like that. Like, an official seal could be used on official documents.
Yeah, and as I was mentioning, that for the seal piece, I've lived through two of these in two different cities. So the process that Jordan is going through is actually what you would, what you would see with a consultant. So, and then the seals were always kept, because the seals were designed when the cities were incorporated. So you don't really get rid of those, they're just not necessarily the most modern tool to use when it comes to knockouts and when it comes to line art.
They still get used to on official documents, I'd say, that's probably...
Yeah, so...
If you see something in here that's concerning to you, that you want to talk to us about, please email us in the next couple weeks. We're not going to be able to bring this back in the next month, so we've got some time. But if you see something, I really would like to see staff using this as soon as they have a chance to edit, review, participate. So sooner the better. And you can send those directly to Mitch.
Give it a feedback, you're a lovely here. Good work. Thank you.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah, congratulations. Yeah. I hope this gets you a good, solid A.
Actually, I should give him a little credit. I think he actually won a big award for this.
Yeah.
So I should also just clarify that this really did stand up against a lot of really great product.
He got number one, he got number one in his class for it, so. And Milwaukee benefits, kind of a win-win.
Really good work.
So we are going to transition to press, just somewhat...
Does anyone need a small break first?
You guys good?
Good.
Craig, come on up.
We don't need it up. Yeah. Maybe we can pass on the policy now.
Please do.
It'll be nice to share.
You can also email it out to the...
Or we could, I can print, I didn't realize it was that, I could print it.
Actually, I think it's the least important part to this discussion. So let me down. Yep.
Do you want to add?
Yeah.
Well, add great things over there.
Yeah.
I knew second one, Tom. I knew someone would come.
Can you hand me a copy? Okay, you can. It would've been great to read all this, but go ahead.
Okay. So this part of our study session involves media relations and there's no formal staff report prepared for this. Instead, what you have in front of you is you have the city's administrative media policy, which Jordan and I are working on updating, and you have the Milwaukee Police Department's media policy. And first and foremost, we, before we begin, we, the purpose of this conversation is we've had some press exposure recently. We have it, we have press exposure all the time. We have, the Clackamas Review has been really great about covering our arts events. We've had some front page covers. We've had some really large interior covers, other cultural events in the city or events in general. Most of our larger community engagement workshops are on specific webpages and that sort of thing, whether they be Clackamas Review or other blogs and webpages and so forth. The partnership that we have with the Police Department and the city is we, to some degree, we share media outlets and we share resources. So the city has a list of public information, if you will, contacts, media contacts, and Jordan will talk to you a little bit more about that. Those, those are the continuous updates of the KGWs of the world, the KOIN6s, that sort of those media contacts that we send our city-specific press release information to. Of course, those change over time. The Police Department, they stick to the more traditional flash alert, emergency services portals that will push emergency releases out to the specific networks of that nature. And unfortunately, we've been told, we've learned over the years that we don't have a key beat reporter really assigned to Milwaukee. I mean, whether that's the Oregonian, whether that's Pamply Media or Clackamas Review, they are downsizing. I think the internet has a lot to do with this. So they're, they're putting more responsibility and workload on, on fewer journalists to cover larger areas. So it's really important that when Jordan sends out his press releases, that they're well-written, that they're, that they have all the right pictures, that they have all the key information and details, and as well as when he's responding to the press, as well as Greg, when he's sending out the newsflash and news alert articles, that they're clear and succinct. So these reporters can pick them up. And Greg will, will talk a little bit more about our, our process recently with disclosing certain specific police reports and incidents that we have, that we have before us. So really, this is just an opportunity for you to learn that we, you do have kind of a newsroom here, if you will, and that we're here to help you. So if you need any, if you, if you get any inquiries from the media and you're not certain about maybe what responses you have or you don't have all the information, please feel free to reach out to Jordan directly. I mean, that's why he's here. Jordan's press trained. I'm press trained. Ann's press trained. Greg's press trained. And we can connect you with that resource in the city because I know sometimes reporters can be demanding and you don't probably always ask them what their deadline is or when they're going to start, so.
Well, and some of our reporters are not all, are not good at getting their facts always straight. So I think it's good to like have somebody as a backup or have somebody as an intermediary sometimes rather than the elected officials.
I agree. And so this is kind of where we can get together now and talk about strategy and talk about process. And we're always looking to improve this. I mean, if it were, if it were my preference, all of our events would be covered and front page and full headlines. Positive events, obviously. And, and that the press and the media have the transparent and real information for any of the negative events that occur. And those are a reality when you're managing a population of 20,000, so.
Do you track like...
Turn it over to these guys.
When you do a press release, then like do you somehow keep a log of if it does show up in the media? Do you have a hit rate or...
I look to see where AI, where it's been picked up. I haven't been like officially tracking like column inches or, or you know, like comments or things like that. But I do have like a running list of kind of what's been picked up by the media and what's been covered.
Right.
Actually, that's a...
Oh, yeah. Sorry, what was that?
What kind of percentage are we looking at right now for press releases that you draft, do you think? That are picked up?
It depends. I would say like if you were, there are certain reporters that have certain, I think maybe fortes that they enjoy reporting on. For example, Ellen Stilary from the Clackamas Review, she is, she enjoys reporting on art, I believe, and she's good at it. So most of the press releases about art get picked up. Some of the other ones that are about different programs or initiatives, those have a much less likely rate of being picked up, but they...
She'll also pick up parks. She does a lot of parks.
Yeah. I think, I don't know, but I would say maybe on whole, probably 40%, I would say is a pretty good estimate of where it's, where it is right now.
So did you do a press release on food cart opening?
I was just going to talk about that.
And did that get any?
The KGW picked up part of it. And then it was in the Clackamas Review and...
But as far as sending a photo or sending a reporter to the food cart pod opening from the Clackamas Review that did not happen, unfortunately.
Well, and that's, that goes back to the resources that we're just all in a crunch right now in terms of, we all, as in other cities, other, other nonprofits, sharing those resources. They, they don't really do that anymore. They rely on us to give them that content.
Clackamas Review always asks you for the...
Which is, and that's actually, that's nice because we had a fantastic photographer. And so they, so what we...
Some of him, it's photos, which I expect will probably be in the review tomorrow.
Yeah, so exactly. And they did. And we provided them with, with those and they're really nice, high resolution. We give them a lot of...
The reporter wasn't here to...
Yeah.
...story on that. Positive kind of thing.
We also, I was going to add, Jordan, well, we all subscribe, my team, to an aggregate, aggregating social media service that, well, you can search for like the city of Milwaukee or just Milwaukee comes up and, you know, you can kind of track who's talking about what in all the social media channels, whether it's Twitter, whether it's Facebook, whether it's Instagram, all the different mediums. And so we're constantly on the look for if we see something that doesn't really look so good, then we can kind of get to the source that way.
So through Google, do you, is that where you do some of that, where you put in that you want to be notified every time the terminology comes up? And we used to do that for the Chamber. Anytime my name or the Chamber's name came up, we got information on the internet, like, hey, here you are.
This is a little more focused in it. This is in real time. So this is if you were to tweet about something with the city of Milwaukee in it, I would see it on my tweet deck. I would see it on my deck. So it would come across as a ticker, almost like a stock ticker. And I could see it coming up and I could point the source and I could follow that person and then track that person. It's very interesting what we see and what we don't see. And it really is some, Jordan has some great stories about people just randomly blogging about cool things and all throughout the city. And also not so cool things like that are not in the city, of course. We have that battle. That's an ongoing battle that we're always trying to define our limits. But that's where we're able to kind of step in when we see that and say, hey, did you know that actually that's County Incorporated? It's about, you know, 500 yards outside of your city, but technically that's not in the borders where we can course correct.
We use HootSuite, if you're familiar with that. It's a, it's a way to put all your social media streams in at one place. And you can look, and you can put in hashtags and things like that to kind of see what's trending that you're interested in or what could potentially affect what you're working on. But we also try to do a, when I'm sending out news releases, I try to send them out to specific reporters that I know are covering certain beats. Like so for instance, the food carts. I didn't just send a news release to the Oregonian in general. I sent it to their, their people who report on food or arts and entertainment, things like that. And then try to make, you know, be personal. I mean, you don't just do like a shotgun approach where you're sending it out with, with nothing in it, but kind of say like, hey, like this might be something you're interested in. And give them a little more synopsis and then provide them opportunities that they could have additional into a story, like a photo shoot or an interview with the food cart pod manager or kind of like a behind the scenes tour of a food cart to get them more interested and, but also paint a better picture in the story too.
And with that, do you still just really, you're going to traditional media or are you also going to PDX Eater or some of those websites?
We got picked up on PDX Eater.
Yeah, and you guys probably saw too, I mean, like things like Amadeus got picked up by Eater. And, and so things like that, yeah, we do try to capture broader mediums. And then also to an extent, we try to be sort of our, yeah, like Mitch mentioned, like our own newsroom. I mean, we try to generate a lot of information through our own Facebook pages that, that people can pick up on it. And Metro actually kind of pioneered that effort around here. I mean, they basically created their own newsroom and it, you know, it had some growing things here and there, but I mean, they have their own reporter there that reports on their stuff and kind of almost became their own news outlet for a lot of things that, that would also get double coverage in other...
They have their own videographer too.
They do, yeah.
Well, and in the day and age of retweeting and reposting and sharing, I mean, this is kind of the new news medium in terms of how news networks are sharing information, which unfortunately isn't a best practice.
It's better and different, right?
As a city, we have to really adjust our strategy for it.
And they do have staff that, you know, they follow like, you know, the city of Milwaukee Twitter and Facebook posts, I mean, looking for news. I mean, because they, yeah, they don't have a traditional reporter to go look for stuff, but they can see stuff popping up on news feeds and then, you know, see what their editors think are interesting or what might make a good story. So we obviously have to be mindful for that too, for our, our social media feeds.
So I'm just a, what they say is a part-time PIO for our department. So I'm a full-time patrol officer and then my similar, other assignments are PIO. So if there's some sort of news thing that needs to be put out, I'm in contact with the chief, detectives, other officers or whatever it is to try to get that information out. I have a tablet I can use at home. I actually do a lot of it at home if I'm off duty or on my weekend and stuff like that, which is actually pretty nice. The one that we use the most is Flash Alert. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. It's just basically a web-based program that most law enforcement agencies use. And we'll write up our press release and put it through that. And that distributes through, you can go in there and select who you want it to send it to, Portland, Vancouver, Salem area media outlets. And it goes to all the news outlets, the media paper and everyone else that you select. And if there's something that's not on there, you can add it to it as well too. And then with the Facebook page as well too, and Instagram and Twitter, we try to, after we put it through Flash Alert, I get an email response saying it's been posted and then we'll forward that out over Facebook as well too. I do have obviously contacts with the media that I call. We don't usually have to call a media person to come do a story for some of the stuff that we deal with. They're usually calling us about it as far as like our, you know, media getting picked up, it typically does. If it's happened right now or actually ongoing, it's usually making the news. If we're doing a press release that may be a week or two old, depending on the circumstances, that might get posted, but it will usually get posted to the back page or just a little blurb somewhere else as well too. And I'm constantly checking that stuff just to make sure that they've posted the right information because it has happened on occasion, even though the press release says one thing, something else does get posted. Call them and try to correct that. They're usually typically good about maybe correcting it. Sometimes they go, sometimes the story just gets deleted off the page because it's not that big of a news story as well too. So that's what we do as well.
Yeah, and I was just going to add, we coordinate with, with the PD when we do certain releases. So for example, you recall a couple, I don't know, months back, we had the issue with the TriMet. Their gates stayed down for, I don't know, like half a day, but nobody knew it was a half a day. It was, you know, the first hour, it was kind of like I was with the chief, Chief Bartol, and he's like, so Greg's going to put this out on Twitter that there's an issue with TriMet and we'll share it. And so we kind of share different things and we kind of cover that. Or if there's a big intersection that's, you know, has a traffic or has an accident or something like that, well, the chief will say, okay, we'll start the lead on this tweet and then you guys can share it or, you know, we'll put this out first or how about you guys take Facebook and we'll take Twitter and then we'll share after they're done, type of thing, just to kind of get everything rolling quickly. Another example is Flash Alert when we had the snow days. There's, there's a point where the city hall, I mean, the news medias were, the media outlets were essentially saying, don't send us your press releases, just go right to Flash Alert. So we kind of just, you know, that way they got, they pulled, so when they were doing the school closures and all this stuff and the city closures, they were pulling that from Flash Alert. So even though I actually sent one to them, didn't even get noticed because they weren't even...
Flash Alert is good for public work stuff.
That's right.
Water.
That's right.
Water shut offs or other public work.
Emergency type service, yeah, infrastructure type related, yeah.
For the boil water notice.
Yeah, so we kind of are mindful on where we target and who we think will actually pick it up. So that's, that's better practice.
And just to add, for us, we don't necessarily have like a template of what kind of information we give out to people. There are some cases that we don't report on due to sensitivity issues, obviously juvenile cases. It's unfortunately some sort of sex abuse case. We don't release any medical records, stuff like that. Any ongoing current investigations, we don't necessarily release. We might do a press release saying this is going off, we don't release information about it. And a lot of that just goes with, we don't want any information getting out that might hinder our investigation. We don't want to get out wrong information right off the back. Sometimes we'll go and get information about certain suspect or something and it's totally wrong information. So we've got to be sensitive to that as well too. You know, other issues, we're trying to build trust with the public as well. And, you know, the Police Department, we don't really deem every story we go to press release worthy. We kind of have to balance that issue between dealing with some people necessarily, maybe on a very bad day and showing a little compassion with that. And it's kind of bit us in the butt sometimes where we've put some stuff out and either they're offended by it or families offended by it. And it's maybe something that really doesn't need to get out. We tend to put out information that's a safety issue to the public in general. It's an emergency situation that everybody needs to be known for, any sort of crime that's kind of really not the norm that obviously is causing a lot of commotion in the city as well too, that the public might want to know what's going on at the time. So it's kind of hard for us to sit there and tell you what kind of exact press releases we're putting out. If it's not a full-blown press release, we might put out some information on Facebook, just general information like Mitch was talking about delays in traffic or an accident blocking this way. You can run another route if you need to.
A week or two ago, you put out some photos of some people that were, you were looking for identifying, doing some tagging and vanishing cars and stuff.
Yes.
And, I mean, I've seen you do various posts like that. Are those posts, do you almost always get the person identified?
Well, in that particular case, we did.
You did?
Detectives caught them. Somebody had notified, identified the van earlier. They did that. Some yes, some no. I mean, it's just kind of hit and miss. We get a lot of calls when people, they think it might be so-and-so or whoever and we investigate those leads and go for it. So it's actually helped us quite a bit. We didn't used to do that as much. And with the advent of social media and everything else, it's kind of really helped a lot of our investigations getting that feedback to the public.
I would say.
And I believe we're working with the Police Department on a page, on the homepage that'll allow us to link that sort of...
Identification.
Yeah, there's, Clackamas County has an identification.
We have that up and running.
Yeah, okay.
So that's on the city of Milwaukee page. And so when I post it on Facebook and stuff, it automatically goes to the city page as well too, the Police Department section.
Nice.
And that's also got other Clackamas law enforcement, you're saying, or it's just Milwaukee?
This is just city Milwaukee, KIID. If you go to like Clackamas County... this way. You can run another route if you need to.
A week or two ago, you put out some photos of some people that you were looking for identifying, doing some tagging and banners and stuff?
Yes.
And, I mean, I've seen you do various posts like that. Are those posts, do you almost always get the person identified?
Well, in that particular case, we did.
You did?
Yeah. Detectives caught them, somebody had notified, identified the van earlier. They did that. Some yes, some no. I mean, it's just kind of hit and miss. We get a lot of calls on people, they think it might be so-and-so or whoever, and we investigate those leads and go for it. So, it's actually helped us quite a bit. We didn't used to do that as much. And with the advent of social media and everything else, it's kind of really helped a lot of our investigations, getting that feedback to the public.
I would think so.
Yeah.
And I believe we're working with the Police Department on a page on the homepage that'll allow us to link that sort of.
Identification.
Yeah, there's, Clackamas County has an identification.
We have that up and running.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's on the city of Milwaukee page. And so, when I post it on Facebook and stuff, that automatically goes to the city page as well too, the Police Department section.
Nice.
And that's also got other Clackamas law enforcement, you're saying, or it's just Milwaukee?
This is just city of Milwaukee, Can U ID? If you go to like Clackamas County, their webpage and stuff, they have like a Can U ID me page.
Okay.
Most of Portland does as well too. Most agencies have that kind of section that you can go there and it gives like a brief synopsis of it, who to contact if you have any information regarding.
So, did you say, when you do Facebook, does that link to Twitter?
Most of the time, yeah. All of them are all linked together. So, if I post on one, they go to the other one. So, or vice versa.
I know it'll foreshorten it in Twitter, but nonetheless, it gets out there.
Yeah. And then internally and in administration, the policy, you'll notice it, it asks that departments, if they're contacted by the press, they contact my office or Jordan. And so, we can make sure that they get all the right facts and defer them to us. And that's a very standard best practice for public agencies, so.
Absolutely. My agency would never, ever let me talk to the press. Not in a million years would they let me.
Tell us more about that.
Well, and I also want to say that Jordan just got his master's degree, as a reminder, in strategic communication or crisis, yeah. And several months ago, we were actually talking very specifically about crisis communication. And it was really extremely useful to have his input as we've been talking to the press for the last several months. So, I also just wanted to call out that he has incredible skill and was really great at coming up with speaking points too, that were digestible and easy to use. If you do get a phone call and you want some help, it's really nice to have someone like that. Just go, you don't have to answer the question first, right? Hold on, you can call him back in 20 minutes. Jordan will drop things, will make it work for you. And that way, you sound poised and ready and we put our best foot forward. So, I just wanted to put a little street cred out there.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's always, yeah, good idea if you, if you know, if somebody catches you off-guard, just to say, yeah, what's your deadline? I'll call you back in a little bit and collect your thoughts.
I do as well, because I get calls from media before I know some kind of a call at home. And I'm like, okay, I need to call you back. And it might take me 20 minutes to an hour to call him back, but I'm getting all the accurate information first before I just start talking to you. So, and they're usually pretty receptive, unless they're like on a five-minute deadline, and that's usually not the case.
Well, you guys were really on it the other night with the bicycle automobile accident on Lynnwood and Monroe.
Yeah.
I had a couple of people who contacted me on Facebook or Messenger and said, hey, what's happening up in your neighborhood? You know, I couldn't go through there or whatever. I'm like, I don't know. But I didn't say that to them. But I started checking, you know, Facebook and my city email and I saw, the first thing I saw was, well, something from Lisa and then something from Ann and then.
Yeah, it was on Nextdoor before it was on Facebook.
Was it? I don't know. Yeah, I don't do Nextdoor. But then, but then immediately after that, you know, something from PD. And so, I just forwarded that to the people that asked me. And so, it's like, here's the official answer.
Well, I would say, I mean, I know that those things, you guys weren't reporting them before the last couple, the last month or so. And there was the one up in, on 9090 too.
Yeah.
And in both cases, the cyclist was at fault, which I thought was very interesting. And I think it's not a bad thing to get that message out there too. So, I think it's good that you're doing those, even though they don't really seem like news in the big picture.
But they do let people, curious people especially, you know, know. I mean, I had.
I think like in the Lynnwood one specifically, that's causing a delay in traffic for people.
Exactly, yeah. And they were like, what's the deal?
That's more something that we would probably put out. You know, the one we did over here, we did put out, and that was at.
4:30 in the morning?
4:00 in the morning. And it didn't cause a traffic delay. We were only there for about 45 minutes, so.
And when people are informed, they can also help, like on Nextdoor, Facebook and things like that. Because, I mean, we had some, you know, comments on our Facebook page, but, you know, somebody else who likes our page will just comment with the correct information, because, you know, they've seen it somewhere else or they write it on the city website. And so, yeah, I think, yeah, putting out more information like that's really helpful all around.
It nips some of the rumor mongering in the bud.
That's the big thing, yeah. And that's why I just forwarded the PD message instead of trying to create my own message, because I want to be sure that people are getting the exact information and not my interpretation of it. And that starts the next rumor. You guys do great.
This is a lot of information.
Yeah.
To be handed, by the way, right there at the meeting. Is this just informational or are we looking at discussing something?
No, this is informational in part because I wanted to make sure that you all had access to these individuals. I think that they are great at what they do and I think they can be a resource to you. It's also because we wanted you to meet the team, that when there's a problem, it's the one talking to the press for you and for me. And I think it's really helpful for you to be able to know that, oh, the person who probably has the most information on this right now is Officer Elkins. I should probably find a way to get that direction.
You guys need to contact me too. I mean, I do work graveyard, unfortunately, so during the day, it's a little hard to get ahold of me, but I will respond to you via email, on-call. And so, on weekends as well too, I can respond with a message or phone call or whatever. It's not a problem.
And the chief has been really great in that specific situation of having, if it's during the day and if he's sleeping, call the chief. He's probably already talked to Greg. And so, making sure that we also are sort of targeting that approach. But they do a lot of work for us in making sure that the information that goes out is correct and that it's usable and helpful to the community. So, I also wanted them to go a little bit of credit, because they're also doing some great work.
Good idea. Thank you.
So, would you want us to contact you, Mitch or Jordan, if it's non?
If it's non-emergency, if you want help, I would say call Jordan. And he can help you. I've actually just sent an email out to all the department directors, reminding them that he's a resource for them as well. Namely, because you get nervous in that moment. And sometimes we say things that we regret.
Well, we wish we hadn't done.
Right. So, it's really nice, even if it's not to get the actual speaking points in writing or to even just talk through it and have him say, do you know how that's going to come out in the press if you say it that way? Because I don't think that's your intention. If it is, great, but here's just how I'm hearing you when you're saying that. It's nice to have a sounding board.
And if Jordan's not available, because, you know, everyone has time off and days off, then contact me or Ann.
And it's also nice if you, if you do get contacted by the media, if you want to give us a heads up. That's always great just to kind of know what.
What's coming.
Anticipate. Yeah, even if you're, you know, you're comfortable saying whatever you're going to say, it's good to give us a heads up.
And Greg gets to sleep. So, you don't have to wake up.
Going to work.
Any other questions then?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Thanks, you guys, for doing this tonight.
Appreciate it very much, which I'll do. Thank you.
And I will say that I think this is Officer Elkins' first council meeting, that he's had the pleasure of presenting. So welcome, you did a great job. Well done.
You're welcome back.
Yes, anytime. Thank you.
See you guys.
Thanks.
That is our last agenda item. I do just want to confirm before we go off. No, actually, I think we're good for the night. I think we're good.
Okay.